Good evening and welcome to the Kaliki Valley Neighborhood Board Number Sixteen Meeting. Today is Wednesday, September eleventh, two thousand and twenty-four, and it is now seven o'clock P M. Rules of speaking: Anyone wishing to speak is asked to click the raise hand icon, and when recognized by the chair, to address comments to the chair. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments under two minutes, and those giving reports are encouraged to keep their reports under three minutes. Please ensure your microphone is muted unless you are speaking. Please state your first and last name for the record before moving into your comments, questions, etc. Written testimony may also be submitted via email using the contact information listed on the Neighborhood Commission Office website. Please silence all electronic devices. Note the more they take action on any agenda item as required by the State Sunshine Law, Hawaii Uris Statutes, Chapter Ninety-two. Specific issues not listed on this agenda cannot be voted on unless properly added to the agenda. Materials can be found at our Kaliki Valley Google Drive link. First on the agenda is City Matli Report's Honolulu Fire Department.
Do we just stand? I'm sorry, this is the first time in... Can we just stand here, or can we approach somewhere?
Yeah, you can come up right behind this, next to the downman in the middle. Yep.
Hi, good evening. A firefighter to Evergast, Patellus. Information previously requested at the eight fourteen twenty-four meeting, a question was asked about the seven nine twenty-four building fire at twenty-three oh four Rose Street, and if a suspect was identified. The H F D fire investigator determined the cause of the fire was incendiary, but please refer to the H P D for any further questions regarding the case. Statistics for August two thousand and twenty-four. The fire station responded to one structure fire and three wildland slash brush fires. Emergencies, the station responded to sixty-six medicals, two motor vehicle collisions, and one hazardous material incident. The fire safety tip for the month is move over for emergency vehicles. Drive with caution and obey all traffic laws, including the move over law, to help protect our first responders while performing their duties near or on a roadway. This is more than a public courtesy, it's the law. Hawaii Uris Statutes twenty-one, twenty-nine one C dash twenty-seven requires a driver of a vehicle that is approaching an emergency vehicle that is stopped for an emergency investigation of a possible traffic violation, rendering assistance to a police officer, or other official duties as indicated by the flashing emergency lights of the stopped emergency vehicle shall: Number one, slow down to a reasonable and prudent speed that is safe under the circumstances of an emergency road situation ahead. If necessary, the driver shall continue to complete stop before making a lane change, other paragraph. Two, and number two, make a lane change into the adjacent lane if necessary and if it is safe to do so, or if possible, two lanes over which leaves one lane between the driver and the emergency vehicle. On a side note, emergency vehicles means police, fire, E M S, ocean safety, and freeway service patrol tow trucks, and even some city county vehicles while personnel are working. Are there any other questions?
Any questions from the board? Seeing and hearing none. Any questions from the community?
None, no.
Yes.
Okay.
We have one question from...
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, sir. I'm Captain Yamashita.
Hi, Captain.
Has that one, I'm sitting next to you.
Regarding the traffic accidents, how many fatalities were there?
Traffic accidents? Were there any traffic accidents on the report there?
We respond to two motor vehicle crash collisions.
Okay, and what then? Your question was?
Any fatalities?
Any fatalities? I don't want the information. I can get it to the next meeting, or if there's any fatalities.
First, could you clarify, was that an arson fire?
Um, I believe it is an arson fire, so it's in the hands of P D because it's in the criminal side now. So they're taking over the investigation, is my understanding. If there's any corrections, I can make sure that we'll get it to you at the next meeting.
Any more questions from the community?
Hi, my name is Kathy from Senator Kim's office. We had some constituents that brought up concerns about residents burning green waste, like, you know, like they're trying to get rid of like plants and roots, and then they were, in one, this particular instance, a person was using a blowtorch to burn roots in the backyard. And so, what would constituents have to do in that manner? Because Clean Air Branch was saying that they have to call, the police would be the enforcement, not H F D? Would you have any clarification on that?
Um, you can call us and we can go out, for sure, because that's considered, what is an illegal burn?
Okay.
And we can go out and advise them of the illegal burn. If it escalates any further, then we'd probably need assistance of H P D to give us assistance to try to get these people to stop doing those illegal burns.
Okay. Are there any other questions?
I have one.
There?
So, as far as burning period?
Burning, burning period?
Yeah, anything that's gonna burn, like it could be paper, could be anything. Because what is our guideline as a, in our, in our community? As for example, I just, I mean, anything that's gonna, what's, what's, what's the guideline like? You cannot have someone smoke if you burn something?
Uh, basically, for cooking, you can, you know, right, you know, for, for cooking, bathing, ceremonial purposes. But to burn rubbish, it is not acceptable here. I know they do it...
No tolerances?
Yeah, burning, burning rubbish is not acceptable. It is not a, it is not a acceptable legal burn, to burn rubbish, unless you're agriculture. If you're agriculture and you have an agricultural permit, then that's a different situation now. But as far as homeowners and stuff, any type of rubbish is not, not permitted.
You answered the two questions I was gonna ask.
Oh, perfect.
Awesome.
Thank you. Oh, Mr. Mr. Franklin, online?
Yeah.
If you can unmute.
Yeah, I have a question. Once someone burns something, I saw in Senator Kam's report, who do we call? Who do the citizens call? Who enforces the citation if they have to come out?
That's a good question. I would have to get back to you on citations. Where's the fire department? My understanding is we don't issue those citations per se, but I would need to get back to you. That's the first time I've heard of, you know, anybody needing to get a citation. Normally, we go out, tell them it's an illegal burn, and normally that stops it and it doesn't reoccur. If it reoccurs, then that would be more of a prevention thing to work with law enforcement. But I can get you the answer, a better answer for you next time, because that's more on the...
Right, because as is that right now, no one, if someone calls, as a constituent did, no one answers, and no one goes out, so basically, that's why I'm asking, why call? If no one's gonna cite?
Sorry, I can add that for you.
Okay.
Yeah, so if, so if it's an active, open burn, like they're actively doing it, I believe they would call H F D or H P D, but if you want to report someone, the Clean Air Branch at Department of Health will take complaints, and they will send an investigator. So it's in Senator Kim's community report for September. You can see, we added a little blurb about that. So it was just, the confusion was, the Clean Air Branch might talk to the representative. They weren't sure if H F D was the one to, I guess, do the enforcement. But Clean Air Branch will take down the complaint. It will remain anonymous, and they will send an investigator.
Okay, thank you. Does that answer your question, sir, or do you need more clarification?
No, I just wanted to know who would go out. I mean, if you see somebody burning, you call the air people. They come out, but I don't know, three, four days later, and then I, I just... But thank you.
Okay.
And Mr. Rojas?
Yeah, because, you know, we have a burning problem, homeless encampments should like burn. So he brought a good point about citation. So then she brought a good point about investigation. So we gotta meet halfway. What are we gonna do? We're gonna do it ASAP, or we're gonna do it to a point where they're gonna keep burning, which is supposed to be, there's no tolerance burn period. So someone need to, kind of like, in the middle, let's do something about it, because, yes, we do have burning problem as far as like...
So what I can do is, I can, I can try to escalate it to get a better representation of the department here to give you maybe a clearer answers.
Yeah.
Because for us, we're kind of operations, so that's not our specialty, you know, enforcement and prevention, that kind of stuff. I mean, we assist those departments, you know, on a lower level. You know, we go out and we do inspections. We go out and we, we tell people, you know, you gotta stop burning and this and that. But for ourselves as operations, we don't give citations. We do, you know, inspections, we can give them citations, but it always gets referred up. It's, it's, that's pretty much where it ends for us.
But he's talking about this, this word right here, and they're open burning and looking at things like that. So if they call and they say, you know, someone is burning in the street, and they call you guys and say there's a...
So again, yeah, I, I would have to get somebody, you know, that is more versed in those types, because we're operations. If we go there and they're burning, we're gonna put it out, basically, you know what I mean? But if they start it up again, I mean, how do we prevent it there? If that's what you're trying to ask me, that would be more like a law enforcement thing? I mean, I, I'm not sure. I'm just, I'm just...
That's, that's kind of a good answer, please.
For us, we have a fire out, yeah? And that's pretty much where, what we're gonna do.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, now, we can tell them, hey, you guys gotta stop burning. But at the same time, are we gonna go there and tell them, oh, you cannot stay in the river? You know, I mean, it's kind of like crossing the lines a little bit.
The thing is, the burning part, because there's, the community is being affected. Like, for example, one, there was an encampment in Deco Park, and then one of the neighbors who, the son had a asthma problem. So those kind of things get affected by the community. So I guess, if someone need to step up and maybe, let's figure out how we can kind of like bring out the violation out there, or kind of, you know, kind of enforce it.
Well, what I can do is, I can just, you know, elevate, you know, your concerns to to our supervisors that are above us, and hopefully, we can get somebody here that can maybe have a better grasp on what you guys are trying to accomplish. Because for us, like I said, operations, basically, our main task is to, you know, for instance, just put the fire out and advise, and that's what we do. Now, if you want a little more than that, that would be more than us as operations, so I would have to get somebody else to give you a better...
At least it starts from the fire, but, because the source is fire and smoke. So at least, we're moving forward as one step at a time, one, one step.
Mr. Rojas, one suggestion is you can ask the governor's representative to reach out to Department of Health's Clean Air Branch to see if they can get a representative or some kind of representation. I believe the governor's representative should be on today's meeting.
Okay. Yeah.
And we have a little break.
Um, got interruption here. Apparently, we tried to have a county garden of the valley. Is that good egg, right?
Uh, that you would need to talk to, I believe, I would have to double check on that. I would have to double check on that. You do need a permit, and I believe it'll probably come from Clean Air, maybe, I'm not sure. Or if it comes from us. I would have to double check on that, on the, the open burn, open burn for egg.
The agricultural burn permit, according to Clean Air Branch, with their handout, it's, they issue a permit, but it's not for individuals. It has to be a business.
It has to be a business.
But over community garden?
Is it, you would have to talk to them, yeah, I, I, I'm not, I'm not sure what, what they enforce. That's a separate, that's a separate agency that would probably enforce that.
Thank you. And if there's no more questions from the community or the board, at this time, we can move on to the next agenda item, which is Honolulu Police Department. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Good evening, everyone. This is Lieutenant Creighton Attico at the Kalikis Police Station. Can everyone hear me clearly?
Yes, sir.
Let me give you guys the statistics for the month first. For the month of August, aggravated assaults, there was one reported for you guys' area. There were three auto thefts, one burglary, no robberies, no sex assaults, one simple assault, seven basic thefts, and no theft from vehicles. Total calls for service were down significantly from the previous month. Five hundred eighty-nine calls for service, including miscellaneous, not just criminal calls, and six hundred fifty-three calls in July. Sorry, my auto light's turning off. First, yeah, instead of a monthly tip, I'm gonna speak about first recognizing that today is the anniversary of nine eleven. And again, it's important that even us, we, we think we're out of the way, we're in Hawaii. We miss a lot of the things that occur on the mainland, but if you see something suspicious, report it. See something, say something. I also wanted to touch on, Mr. Tan brought up the Major Chiefs, Major Cities Chiefs Association survey that came out. I tried to check in with them about where they get their statistics from, and I believe they, they go through the reporting that is done to the F B I. So basically, what happens, every arrest that we have, we assign what is called a U C R number. It stands for universal criminal, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on what the R stands for, but those are basically reported to the F B I, just so that they can have the, the number statistics. And I believe that's where Major Cities Chiefs Association gets their statistics from. As I tried to look deeper into their particular survey, it, it doesn't, it doesn't break it down as to locations where crime, where the crimes occurred. So again, if you guys go to HonoluluPity.org, you can go to Crime Mapping, and it'll let you search for specific crimes, so specific violent crimes. You can choose a timeframe, and what it'll do, it'll give you right down to the street where it occurred. It won't give you the exact address, but you'll get the street, so you guys can see. Also, again, every month, I, I tell you guys the stats. And this is for you guys, particularly your guys' area, it only encompasses two beats for, for our district. So it's kind of, it's kind of narrowed down to the two streets, the two major streets that are growing up in that, on those two beats, five-five-eight and five-five-nine. Let me read to you guys what the Major Cities Chiefs Association put out in a, in a press release regarding the violent crime report. While the police are one component of the criminal justice system, the broader issue of violent and chronic offenders cycling through the criminal justice system, leaving more victims in their wake, is a contributing factor of violent crime and must not be allowed to continue. While some of our district attorneys decline to prosecute, and our judges turn a blind eye to community risk, our federal partners can only adopt so many cases. Further, juvenile crime is soaring, and the unique challenges associated with this concerning trend must be addressed. Our criminal justice system needs transparency. Criminals need deterrence and accountability, and victims deserve justice. A collaborative, targeted, and holistic approach to combating violent crime is required to make our city safer. Those agencies which experience a decrease in homicides, such as Dallas, exemplify what is possible when investments are made, police officers are supported, and stakeholders work together to achieve the common goal of driving down crime. Our communities are safer and prosperous when we work together. That's kind of where we stand. We, I want you guys to understand that we are doing the job to our best of our ability, and that it's never a situation where we feel we're separate. We live in these communities with you. So we, we understand what's at stake, and we, we have a, we have a definite stake in what is going on in the communities, and I want you guys to be assured of that. I also had one of the, the community members asked about some clarification on the new laws on the e-bikes. Unfortunately, our traffic division, I believe they're waiting on the actual wording for the laws to come out so that they can, we can draft a policy. And once that's done, I'll be able to give you guys our exact policy regarding the e-bikes going forward. I'll open myself up now to any questions or concerns. Anyone? I don't know if you guys are muted now.
Nope. Seeing and hearing none, but any questions from the community?
My name is Mario Ashiro. And then, um, the Oxford House guy, the manager, he doesn't trust the people going to the house, so I have this, some what I saw that he gave to me. I want to know, I wanted to hand it in because I think I should be turning it in because my duty as a neighborhood were concern of the safety of this sword going to anybody. So I wanted, if I can just hand me to the Kaluka Police Station, because I get them down in my car. Okay?
Yeah, that's not a problem. You can come to the station, or you can even have an officer come to you.
Oh, yeah?
Yeah.
Thank you. This is all I want to know, information of handing it back, handing it in.
Yeah, it's not a problem, sir.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. And we have one more question?
I've been done with uninsured, unlicensed drivers.
I'm sorry, sir?
What's been done about unlicensed drivers?
You're, you're worried, um, what, what is your concern about them?
Is it legal to drive on the road without a license?
Oh, yes, because in, in Honolulu County, at least, if you're driving without a license, you can be at the least cited, but you can also be arrested.
Thank you.
No problem, sir.
Any more questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great evening.
Actually, Mr. Rojas had one more question, if that's okay?
Sure, no problem.
Is, is a moped riders considered as, as they has to have license to drive the moped?
Yes, for a, for an actual moped, and not something like a, like a toy grade. So that's anything above five horsepower that they require, they're required to be at least sixteen years of age, and they have to have a driver's license.
So, you know what, we have, we have a lot of, we have more than a dozen, oh?
Oh, believe me, sir, we, we do it daily. The problem now is that, a lot of the kids realize if they run, that the police officer is not gonna chase them, because we, we're, we don't wanna be liable for causing a crash. So a lot of times, my officers especially are keyed onto them, especially because a lot of the property crime is tied to these, these juveniles on mopeds. So they have been, I mean, we try to stop them, we investigate as much as we can, sir.
Well, you know what, majority of what I see, they're not juvenile. Some of them are adults, and do you guys even check for like, unlicensed operators?
It, it depends. It depends on what they're doing. So I'm not sure if you're aware, but now official, if it's an actual moped above five, five, five horsepower, it has to have a license plate. The City of Honolulu issues a license plate now. So we stop many mopeds without license plates, and we recover them, either as stolen or as unregistered. So we, we do it. It's, we do it a lot. And during the course of that, we find out if they're unlicensed and such, and we do take appropriate action.
Yeah, because the way I see it is that, just to share it with you both, in the community, a lot of either homeless or people who does, you know, they, they, they're not inspect with, with our community. They, their, the main transportation is mopeds, mopeds that's modified. I hope that, you know, you guys please check those mopeds out and check the drivers themselves, if they do have license to drive those. And it will keep our community safe, you know, because they drive crazy, you know, they...
Yeah.
Either they're gonna, someone's gonna hit them, or they're gonna hit someone. That's all I wanted to say.
I, I believe that too, sir, and then we, we push that as supervisors with our officers about the priority of making sure that these moped drivers and the mopeds are legal and operating safely.
Thank you.
No problem, sir.
And if there are a number of questions, if there are one more question from the community?
I wanna know the moped law about packing, packing on a moped.
If it's a, if it's a motor scooter, you can, but if it's a moped, like the basic mopeds, you cannot pack anybody on a moped.
Because they're guys packing, they're packing backwards.
Yes, yes, it's crazy, and those, those people, we try and make a point to stop.
These guys supposed to be, certainly...
I'm sorry?
I think, I think they're supposed to be wearing a helmet. Like he said, they're so radical, they're doing, actually, you guys supposed to be checking out if they're stolen. I know, you guys in the valley, they're riding, it's like, it's stolen moped, because this guy, every week, not every week, every month, they get a different moped, they're riding, you know what I mean? And, and parts didn't change, all different colors, they spraying on like that, will cover up the, the part of, you know?
Believe me, in our, in our evidence, even downstairs under the Kalikis Station, we have a number of mopeds. So a lot, we're, we're just like you guys. We, we see them, and we take the mopeds away, and they go steal another. So we, we try and do, we're, we're doing our best. But it is, it is a concern of ours that we share with the community, and it is, it is one of our priorities.
Thank you.
No problem.
And if that's it for now, I do wanna thank you again, Mr. Attico, and have a good evening.
You too. Thank you so much, guys.
Thank you.
And next up, next up on the agenda is Board of Water Supply, Iris Oda.
Hi there, I'm online. Sorry, can't be there tonight. Just to report, the, sorry, we had five main breaks last month at four different locations. The first was on August seventh, near twenty-eight thirteenth, Amanaiki Street. The next one was on August eighth, near, two of them, on August eighth, both at twenty-seven, twenty-three Neehe Street, two different pipe sizes. And there was one on August twelfth, near twenty-four, thirty-nine Kini Place, and on August nineteenth, near seventeen fifteen Moani Street. So I just give my main break report, and we just have one general water announcement. So sorry, I can't pass out the flyer, but it's on the Google Drive. We have on September twenty-eighth, that's Saturday, September twenty-eighth, from ten A M to two P M. There's the Imagine a Day Without Water. So it's an annual Imagine a Day Without Water event, and it's at the Kapolei Regional Park. So the Board of Water Supply and various city agencies, state agencies, and communities, agencies and organizations, well, there's gonna be a day full of activities that focus on the value of water. We'll have interactive exhibits, including a rainbow workshops, zero escape plant craft activities, succulent mini workshops, and more. So there'll also be some mono food that's available for purchase. It's free for all ages, and you can always go to BoardOfWaterSupply.com/OneWaterHawaii to get more information. So if you are able to go onto the Google Drive, it's a, it's a two-page flyer that has the date and the event again on... that has the date and the event again on September twenty-eighth, at ten AM to two PM at the Kapolei Regional Park. And on the second page, it's an event map that shows a little bit of where things are gonna be at the site. And, and the parking. Um, and then that's all my report. If there's any questions?
Thank you. Any questions from the board, Mr. Rojas?
Yeah, I got one question. Oh, what's causing all those breaks, man?
Excuse me?
Oh, what's causing all those breaks? We got three breaks.
Uh, I, I don't have that in the report. They just have the date and the location. Um, if you have to know the exact breaks, I have the reasons. They may have that information, but I have to inquire, put an inquiry in for it. But a lot of times, um, let me look at the ages. They're getting older. We do hope mains last from fifty to hundred years. But if they're shorter, it could be the material that is in the soil, could be movement um in the ground itself, shift, natural shifting. Um, and it's usually low enough and below grade enough that the truck, um, the vehicles should not be impacting it, but I'm not sure. And then also too, I'm not sure if there was construction in the area. So there's various factors that could lead to a main break. I'm just not searching for these. So if you'd like a specific um, address or any, and like you have a specific address, I could put an inquiry in for that if they happen to know and able to document the potential, the, the, the cause, potential cause. Is that something you'd like to request? For, that makes sense, right?
I was just gonna, three, three breaks at one point, so, just wanted to find out.
Well, it's two at one. Oh, sorry, yeah. If there's two at one, it looks like they just have two different sizes. So there are water mains that are different sizes that are next to each other or near. There's a standard spacing between them, but there could be, there was something that um, might have happened in that one, or sometimes you break one main break, may break another main nearby. So if you're interested in that one that had two at the Niihi Street, I could ask about that for next month if they're able to provide something. That someone had to go, would have to go and research that.
I just wanted to find out, um, you know, how often we get, we get major breaks like that. I mean, is it like maybe what, two, three, four times a year or like maybe two, three times a month? Um, what's the statistic of that?
I used to know the number. I don't know what that is, so I'll have to ask. But we do have like an average. We take keep records, so we have like an average of main breaks over the year or per month or per day or something. No, excuse me, not per day, but an average per year. We used to be under this, the average standard and an average, average for the nation, so I'm hoping we still are. But, um, I can try to, I'll ask that question and report that next month. The average of main breaks for the island.
Thank you. Any question? Or Mr. Kumalai has a question?
Iris, uh, I have a question. Uh, wanted to know if the water water supply would allow us to, uh, put up a banner to announce community activities at the Kalueka Street, uh, pumping station, Kalueki and, uh, I think Malanier. To put up a banner on the grassy area of the pumping station.
Um, I can ask that. I'm gonna need to, um, when do you need to put this banner up? Is it gonna be before next month's meeting?
Uh, yeah, basically to maybe announce the neighborhood board meetings and, uh, activities in the Kalueka area, community activities.
Okay, and you're asking, I'll have to ask our communications office, that may have to look into the policies, but these are gonna be standalone banners or you want, is there, sorry, I'm not familiar with the station right now. Is it a fence that you could put it on or you're looking to put it on a post?
No, there's no, uh, fence in the area. I think we'd have to put up our own, uh, poles.
And it's a temporary pole? Cause I know couldn't be permanent. Temporary to put down and you're gonna take it out every time?
Yeah, we'll probably put it up before the neighborhood board meeting and take it down after the meeting is done.
Okay, I'll put that inquiry in and see what they say. And, um, if maybe I, your information is on the neighborhood board, uh, website, I can give a call back to you and let you know before the meeting or at the next meeting.
Alright, thank you.
Or, or the communication office person might call you. Okay, thanks. Good question.
Thank you. And any questions from the community? We have one.
Is the pumping station finished at Kalueki? Or is there more to be done?
Yeah, you know, I have to check on that. I think it's still ongoing because someone mentioned something last week. So I'm thinking it's ongoing, but I can report on that next month too.
Thank you.
Sure, you're welcome.
That was, that was my, my question about the pumping station because it's, there's a sign that says it's a museum. So is that open? Or how does that work?
I heard it's a museum too. I will, I will ask if it's open. I, I've heard it's a museum. I don't know if it's open to the public. Since nine eleven, they restricted a lot of access to our facilities. But I will ask the puppet if the museum is still there, because even I have never been there my whole career. And so I will ask and report next month. I wanna see it too.
And are there any more questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing none. Thank you so much, Iris, and have a good evening.
Alright, thank you.
Next on the agenda is residents and community concerns. Are there any residents and community concerns at this time? Is when you can come up?
Yeah!
So we had a concern regarding the Oxford Silver House. So if you want to come up, um, and further elaborate for us, uh, what's going on?
Um, my name is, my name is Marvin Oshiro, um, Pidawai Street Neighborhood. I tell you, we the board over here, but, um, see, the problem is, the concern is, this Oxford House, there's no, no reason, no warning at all. Been put in, put into the neighborhood, right next to my property, right next door. And these guys, the Oxford Clean and Sober House, Oxford House guys, the managers don't really now, the manager doesn't pay attention to what's going on at this, um, twenty-seven forty-nine Oxford House property where these guys, the manager is bringing in people to, to, um, live in that house because that house is to do it, um, clean and sober to make, um, these guys get out of the jail and prison. So that they're collecting rent from these, um, people, the members. And they don't know when the manager, he don't know himself when he goes to work, they're selling drugs. I live right next door, they think, I don't can see that. They, he goes to work, they're smoking weed, all a smell, smoking weed. And they're doing all these, excuse me, all these illegal things in the neighborhood. And like now, the manager don't know this guy doing, he, he's not gonna tell him. See, these guys know that no women at all supposed to be on that property. They're, I call it camping. They're sleeping over. They're living there now. And it's a part of, this guy Burn, the manager, he's putting people, making like he own the place where he think, he get the couples in there, the girls not supposed to be there. They get the boyfriends over there. So he think more of family kind of way of doing things. So he feel more more consistent of the rent and the money going to the, the program. He's the manager, he's taking care of, he, he's not even, his paperwork and bookkeeping work, I don't think he be doing that because you don't want them to find out what he's doing actually with the money coming in and where it's going on. I think, like, the guy's, you know, in a house, thinking, telling me that I'm neutral. This guy is, um, Burn is, is, is bragging about get nine hundred dollars cash, he get eight hundred dollars cash in his pocket, two thousand dollars of a check. And get this, he's doing a paperwork on his, Arag Denos, he get two hundred thousand dollars, two hundred thousand dollars in his book, in, in his bank account. They don't know he doing all that. He's just doing them because he can get away with what he's doing with the program, shoving people in a house by getting more people in a house. And all these guys doing all these things under his, under the house where he don't even know. He telling me for information, oh, who's doing that, what they're doing. And he's the one running the damn house. The, the other guys don't know what he's doing actually, and he's doing whatever he can for get more members into, uh, into the house. He get the living room boarded up, petitions. This house is only like four bedrooms. He get like fourteen guys living in it out. It's like master homes, bread and breakfast. No, this is more worse. Um, this is an Oxford House with all drunk people, related. Sober house, all related. People going through the program, he's supposed to be going through the program, like his cousin. His cousin telling me, hey mom, I need your right to. I see him outside, he's like, hey, what's up John? Why you need a right to Kiwauk? Why you need a right to, I, I gotta get out of the house. His, his cousin, he's running the damn house. He's supposed to be taking care of his cousin. By, you know, making him, they get probation of two years. Drug testing, go drug testing, um, they get classes they're supposed to go to in front of counselors. No, no, no classes. When this guy get control of the, what, what he's doing, what he like, because he don't wanna do anything. He doesn't do anything to do with what, what gonna take his time and his, you know, whatever is, is doing. He's just doing whatever he like, controlling their house. And these people.
Alright, I got a question. You ever had one, uh, regulatory, government regulatory agency come in, investigate or at least come and inquire about the operation? Because they gotta be regulated. Somebody gotta be overseeing.
Somebody, somebody gotta be taking care of watching these guys what they're doing. Nobody's doing that because
So nobody ever came?
And he's not, hey, you know, I don't have a phone. I not watching, I not monitoring or recording what, what's going on in the house. It's so much times with cops, even in neighborhood. Hey ma, what happened last night? I seen all the police over there. Oh, domestic violence. The guys fighting in the house. Burn is the manager. He not can even handle managing part of keeping control of these guys. These guys are
Or maybe one of our, uh, representatives can address the situation.
Okay, I'll go see. Yes, so Mr. Oshiro reached out to Senator Kim's office. Oh, my name is Kathy, but Kathy Lee from, um, representing Senator Kim's office. So Mr. Oshiro did reach out to us. Um, based on our research, so the home is registered on the Department of Health's Clean and Sober Homes Registry. That registry is monitored by the Alcohol and Drug Abuse Division, and they have a quality assurance team that, um, does monitoring for that. So as I explained to Mr. Oshiro, what, um, the process has to be is that he has to put in a complaint to the quality assurance people. Then what they'll do is they'll go ahead and then they'll send an investigator in. And they also, um, according to the supervisor of the of the quality assurance section, they also checked the address to see if there's like nine-one-one calls or any kind of emergency calls associated with that address. She said that's part of a yearly review. Um, I don't know the specifics of that yearly review. Um, so that's why, um, our office encouraged Mr. Oshiro to go ahead and put in that complaint to DOH. So to answer your question, that you are correct, there is a regulatory authority that should
Nobody has been notified yet. We need the complaint first
Yes.
to initiate.
Because, um, like I said, they weren't too clear about, um, the annual review. I'm not sure exactly what triggers that or if the home already had an annual review. They're not gonna release that information to us.
Yeah, but they registered as a, what they doing, they legal.
Yes. So if you go on, um, Senator Kim's community report for September, we have it on the second page. There is, um,
For the newsletter?
Yep, we have the link to the registry. So you can go on and you can actually search, um, by district, by area. So that's why we put it in, um, the Kalueki Valley, Kalueki Palama and the Liliha Alava, um, newsletter, because there was, um, we did find several homes in that area. So
So in, Mr. Oshiro's, uh, issue, he needs to make the complaint first.
Yes.
And then we went sees, wow, hopefully some action will be made.
Yes.
And so, so you gotta do that?
Yeah, I, I, I don't have no computer, computers or
So, so, okay, so the quality assurance section is at the Department of Health?
Yes.
Okay. And please the main witness to this situation and this
Of everything.
Okay, so uh, well, we will do something to, um, guiding truth to go to, um, Department of Health.
Yes, so our office is working with Mr. Oshiro because, um, he
So you're gonna initiate and then help him?
Um, so we're not, so our office can't really initiate, but we will assist him with filing the report. So we can't file it on, like Senator Kim can't file the report because she's not, um, the witness, you know, to the
Yeah, yeah.
alleged activity. But we will assist Mr. Oshiro with filing the report with DOH.
Thank you so very much.
So that way, because that, that's the thing, right? It's like if you wanna report a crime, you have to call nine-one-one in order to trigger a report. Like, so that's why I was explaining to Mr. Oshiro that, so our office kinda just bring it to DOH and have them investigate. We need something to trigger that investigation.
So, so Mr. Oshiro, have you, uh, have you, um, do any paper trail as far as reporting to the police?
Not yet.
You have to do it first.
Yeah, well
Yeah, you have to do it.
Uh, I need the help because
Because there's nothing to report if you don't initially want police to report.
I, I literally, because I help me stupid, I'm great, I'm paranoid.
No, 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 no.
I'm on fire, I'm serious, I'm serious.
Yeah, no, 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 check this out.
I was, hey, I was paid some motivation, I was, the class, I was the class.
You know my, I, I, I'll give you my number after this and then, I'll let you, you can contact us. If anything happens, that's part of my job. Neighborhood Security Coordinator, call me, we'll make the report together and then we'll make a paper trail. Then we'll bring that to the Department of Health.
Because even Even though I go to the police station, they can't give me no, um, you know, their reports of how many calls they had in the house because they don't have no right to put, give out the, this of complaint. And they, they, they just can't give it out. Because I went to the police department and telling them, oh, where the complaints of this house of all of domestic violence going on? And so much, domestic violence going on in this house is unbelievable.
It affect you because you live next to it. It affect you mentally. So we, we need to make a report.
Like this guy, they changed my life, it's to living in, next door to the house.
So what we talking, he is Mr. um, Mr. Ota.
Ola she is.
She's on
Yeah, excuse me, excuse me, don't worry. This is just community concern, but, um, oh, Mr. Rasi have
Actually, Jay's had it first, you know?
Okay, okay.
So I used to have the Ohana, Ohana House right next to me. And they were, uh, homeless people who went, was in the ER room. And they would come out and they would stay behind my house for about six to eight weeks. And they were noisy, they use drugs, they used to throw needles in my, on my property, they used to throw bottles and stuff like that. I used to call the cops on them two to three times a week. And I would just constantly filing reports. They were there for a while. And they had some great tenants there, but they had some very bad tenants.
Oh, you need this one.
Just one.
This one.
And, but you got arguments all the time, be waking up two, three o'clock in the morning. Eventually they, they, they left. Uh, but you got constantly call. Eventually it was so bad where I say, you know, a colleague finally complained about the Ohana House. They didn't ask where I dressed, they didn't ask for anything. They knew exactly what I was talking about. They knew exactly where I was. They were there two, three times a week. And if the cops come, knock to that house, right? They have to kick them out.
Because, because like, it's the police department like, not marking this house as Oxford House, um, twenty-seven forty-nine house. They don't know what's actually, before they go to investigate or hit that house. They don't know, not know information of how many times these guys got
Just call the cops, that's all I'm gonna say, for you.
They're totally telling you, you gotta report it.
You just, just constantly call the cops. Just, if, if there's if there's yelling and screaming, call the cops. If there's drug use, call the cops. If there's throwing and, and needles, because I mean, imagine having needles in your yard, right? Buy, uh, bottles of beer in your yard. You know, just all kinds of things and the throwing things. I had cameras all over my house on the outside, right? They went in, they cleared off my tarot patch. Um, and, and clear up, you know, I mean, they do all kinds of horrible things, but you know, you gotta report. You just gotta constantly call the police, call the police. And eventually you'll get shut down. And there's plenty houses like that in Kalueki Valley.
So, so, do you hear like yelling, fighting, you know, that, that is disturb you, because that's disturbing the peace, so. You know what, call the cops, if not, I can give you a camera, I mean, a personal camera that you can, you know, make record of, that way we can present this to the Department of Health. You know, and because they have to be regulated for what they not doing correctly, they gotta maintain the standard of their health. And that's not healthy if they will be fighting there, they're supposed to be recovering, they're supposed to be recovering from their problems, and that's not, that's not a recovery mode.
It's not going forward, they, they, they still, they keep not doing their part of cleaning sober house, this guy, the problem is coming worse and worse, and that.
It needs to be fixed, yeah.
Mister Oshiro, oh, sorry, that's why, um, you know, I agree with Mister Ohas on that point, and that's exactly what Senator Kim was saying, is that. If the conditions of the home are this bad where people are noticing outside, imagine how it is for the residents who are actually seeking treatment.
Yeah, the members, the members.
The worst people who wanna get treatment, so, you know, like you said, right, it takes one bad person and nine, and in this case, it's not true.
Right, and, and some manager.
According to your allegations, it is the manager, so, um, you know, you gotta report it, like exactly like James said, it's like they need some, you know, it has to.
Yeah.
There's has to be something to trigger, like we can't just go in and just in this Senator, you know, Senator Kim, contrary to what people think, kinda just bust into the house and then, you know, and monitor. It has to be done through a regulated process, so starting with that, starting with that, then you gotta call nine one one, report the illegal activity, and then.
All rules of regulation.
Also continue and make your complaint to the Alcohol Drug Abuse Division, their quality assurance, those two will put together and then it builds a stronger case against the manager of this home.
Because now, all the guys who's cleaning, talking on is the, the within, you won't kick them out, because they were too, now, okay, all them guys coming in.
I understand, and that's why we're saying that, you know, the, you know, we can, we can go through the allegations here, but there's, you know, it has to have some kind of actionable.
Yeah.
Okay. Thing to go ahead and do that.
I have a house, where my sister trying.
So, so who else is doing that?
So, let's keep record, and, uh, we're here to support you as far as getting, uh, gathering the information. Um, so that way you can make a good report, and then, uh, we got, um, Senator Kim's side as well to help us, and hopefully we can get that letter to the Department of Health, and. We go from there, leave it there, it takes a while to get this process.
Yeah, yeah, and it's like, how, how many years have you gone through this, and I live there, I own a property, I have a family, and yet. We gotta go through this problem, this guy is living like right there, and honestly, because it's like.
Yeah, we gotta make the paper trail, Marvin, we gotta make the paper trail, so.
Yeah, and, and actually, there's been problems in the past, but back in the, uh.
Oh, yeah.
Nineties, I wanna say.
Stephen, S- Stephen just own, um, run those two houses in the front, they went to selling drugs, and, and two, two clients, they had to raise that, that houses.
Oh, yeah.
The Stephen study, who's running those houses.
And, and the drug dealers will be going up in Dunkley Street, bringing into people's property, you know, but yeah, thank you very much.
Well, thank you guys, thank all you guys very much, with this problem.
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you, Marvin, for coming, I appreciate that.
Mahalo, um.
I just, yeah, that's, that's what I want to say is, is, is to, uh, Mahalo Marvin, for giving the courage to have it speak publicly, because, you know. He faces the possibility of retribution and, you know, from his neighbors, and so, thank you for doing that. Want to under, underline what James was saying about how there's a bunch of these kind of houses all throughout Kalih, and we gotta figure out, how, how do we address this on a policy level? And then the last thing I wanted to ask is Kathy, thank you for, for help with, with Senator, I wanted to ask you, I was looking at on the DOH website, is it still Richard? The Birkin and Angela Boland that are the main contacts for this, you know, sober program?
Yes, I spoke to Angela, so Angela Boland is the supervisor.
Okay.
Um, I don't know exactly, because sometimes the state websites aren't exactly updated, but I know for sure that Angela Boland is the contact that I spoke with.
Awesome, thank you.
And then, um, just to add to your point, um, on a policy level, and that's something that maybe DPP might be able to get involved in is for the permitting, because he did, um, bring up how it's. Supposed to be like that amount of people in the home, which was a bit alarming for, for me.
Yeah, yeah, what was the ceiling?
What is that?
What was the number of people?
It's a ceiling.
Possibly, I, I, I don't wanna go.
Thirteen, fourteen people in a two bedroom, a four bedroom house. The, uh, our bedroom they made was storage, it was, it was like a, a closet, and then another guy made it to a bedroom, so it's four bedrooms. With about thirteen to fourteen guys in that house, living in the living room and all that, and two guys per bedroom, yeah, two guys per bedroom in that house.
When you're only supposed to have five non-member, uh, family members in a house, so that's a monster house.
No, it ain't no monster, but you're making a one monster.
Yeah, so you have more than five non-family members, it's considered.
Yeah, fine. It's way more than what he got to do.
Yeah, so.
Marvin, sorry, I just wanna thank you again for bringing this up, um, but we do have to, yeah, I do see someone online, that's why I wanted to speak as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you all you guys very much.
Yeah, thank you.
I appreciate it.
Um, I see Randy Franklin, you have your hand up? I'll be for the wait, um, are you still there?
Yeah, I'm here, I just wanted to tell the gentleman, it's gonna be frustrating for him as he goes through this process, but we need him to help this board out. And we need to track that, so the next time they wanna stick one of these houses in Kalih, we'll have evidence from him. That these houses don't work, and that we should not have these houses in Kalih, because. Once they come in Kalih, they are unregulated and no one actually control these houses at all, so we should work closely with him. So, and track this every month, so the next time any elected official wanna stick one of these in Kalih, we'll have the evidence and prove that these. We are, these houses don't work because no one is regulating them, that's all I want to tell him, everyone is correct, he has to file reports, we have. And if we want to stop them from sticking all this, these houses in Kalih, we need him to help us track these. I'm ready, thank you, I go back.
Thank you, and, um, just to, um, ask again if there are any more residents or community concerns at this time, online or in person? And if not, um, we can move on, um, and thank you again, everyone, for bringing up your community concerns as well as comments on how to deal with these concerns. But next up on the agenda, um, is Mayor Rick Blangiardi's representative bandmaster Clark Bright.
Aloha, everyone, can you hear me?
Yes.
You can hear it, great, aloha, chair, board members, committee members, aloha. Wanted to start off by a brief summary of mayor's newsletter, the city takes action to address crime. Along White and I Coast, uh, also nearly thirty brand new security cameras installed in Chinatown. Mayor Blangiardi hosts a healing vigil, vigil on the anniversary of Maui wildfires. Uh, the city begins demolition of a hoarder house on Tensekolo Street. And Honolulu was named the most desirable city to live in the United States. Quite an honor, all of that is in the mayor's nu- newsletter, the link is in the chat. Just following up now on some issues from the previous board meeting. Uh, the first two, I will respond with the same response as it has to deal with DTS. Uh, and, and it's the same response for both requests, the first one is the bus stop. That a resident, uh, shared regarding danger on a Kalih street and the intersection of Kaimanaiki Street. The second one is can we put up a no parking sign, uh, uh, at the intersection of Bumana Road and Kalih Street. So from DTS, they will conduct an investigation, which may require research, site inspections. Traffic study and an analysis of the area's traffic pollution history. They will inform the board of their findings once the investigation is completed, so once again, thank you for those issues. There was also a question in regards to safe routes to school, uh, is it a city or state's project? Uh, is actually both, the state routes to school, the statewide program run at both the state and county level. The state and county programs are dedicated to ensuring that children and their families have safe access to school when walking and biking. I do have the emails to both the state representative and the county representative in the chat, the links are in the chat. And did wanna share a little bit of background that we received, uh, from HPD on e-bikes. What are the age requirements, road laws and licensing, this is what we got back. Uh, first of all, an e-bike is defined as a low-speed electric bicycle or e-bike. The assisted maximum speed on a paved level surface when powered solely by such a motor is less than twenty miles per hour. Operators of e-bikes are not required to possess a driver's license, however. E-bike owners are required to register and pay a fee of thirty dollars at any satellite city hall location. You must be at least eighteen years old to register for that fee. E-bike operators are required to be at least fifteen years or older. And if the operator is under the age of eighteen, the e-bike must be registered to a household member who is eighteen years of age or older. Anyone operating an e-bike under sixteen years of age is required to wear a helmet. The operators of e-bikes with motors have the same rights and privileges as bicycle, bicycles without motors unless specifically prohibited by signage. For example, e-bikes as well as bicycles are restricted from operating on sidewalks locating, located in a business district, like Honolulu or Waikiki. It is legal, however, to ride a bike or an e-bike on the sidewalk in residential area. And Chair, that's all I have, so I'm open for questions or comments, follow.
Thank you, and other, are there any questions from the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, any questions from the community on?
Um, I have a concern on Puyai Street at the, at the dead end, the quarter zat. I'll put the sign up over there, it's only. Eight by, by six or something, but it's all spray painted, you can't even know, notice the, see, you have plenty people up there doing drugs and hanging out there. They're not supposed to be in this, we call it the circle of the quarter zat, the dead end, they're not supposed to be hanging, parking the car, um, washing car. Cleaning house, they call it. The, the, the police could come up there and chase them out, but these guys, they're in their cars, parking over there. Like half a day, they're sleeping over there overnight, they're not supposed to be, it's no parking anytime of the day, of the day or night. But this sign is all painted, can't see it too good, and it's a small sign. I think we gotta get a bigger sign and a new sign, so these guys can see it's no parking at any time zone.
Thank you, thank you, Mister Oshiro, thank you very much, can you give me the, I'm sorry?
Thank you very much.
Oh, thank you, can you give me again the address?
Of that, quarter zat, Puyai Street.
Yeah, or, or of, of your residence, uh, so that we can at least get a, a, a marker close to where the sign is located?
It's at the dead end of quarter zat, at the end, we call it the circle, it's the round part of the dead end part of the street, it's right at the end of the street, get one sign over there. And it's too small and it's all spray painted over, I just wanted to be check. So, so the police department knows that, knows most, mostly anybody at any time parking over there, and it's sleeping over there.
Okay, got it, thank you, is that, is that Puyai?
Thank you very much. Could it be Puyai?
Okay, got it, thank you, Marvin.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Oshiro, thank you.
Thank you, and, um, Mister Ohas has a question?
Yeah, but as far as the Kalih Street and Piluhana, you said that it's under investigation for a no parking sign?
Yes.
How long that will take, sorry?
Uh, so sorry, they didn't, they didn't, uh, designate any amount of time, but they will go through that investigation.
What is the likely we gonna get that, no parking sign, sir, cause there's a big problem.
It, it really depends on what the investigation states, and I, I, I understand the concern, but they do have to go through their investigation to determine whether or not that goes up.
Is it one more month, two more months, or three months?
I'm so sorry, we don't have that information, but they're going through it first and then they'll get back to you.
Thank you, and are there any more questions from the board or the community online or in person, oh, Mister Sung?
I had a question, uh, Bandmaster Clark, this is James, just wanna say thank you for entertaining us on, uh, town today, uh, in nine eleven, it was nice seeing you again.
Thank you so much, James, it was great to see you, thank you for coming up, uh, it's an honor for the band to honor our first responders, uh. We don't know what they go through, but we certainly appreciate your heroic efforts every day, thank you, James.
Thank you, and then Mister, yeah.
Hi Clark, this is Dana, yeah.
Aloha Dana.
I just wanted to find out what the response was for the, I know it's not been brought up at this meeting, but in the Kalih, uh, the bus route from. Kalih all the way to Kahala, that was a big change that went through, uh, what is the public response for that new route, the bus?
Thank you for that, we will definitely reach out, uh, to the bus company to check that route, the new route. From Kalih all the way to Kahala. We will find out about that information and get back to you, thank you so much, I'm sorry, I don't, I don't have it right now.
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, are there any more?
Wait, I don't want more. I, I wanna clear, oh, sir, I wanted to clear out something, um, so on, on Piluhana and, and, um, Kalih Street, there's, there is sign at this point, it says. Uh, government property, no trespassing, and it's on the unpaid road. So that's where we wanna put no parking sign, correct?
Uh.
Is that what we're gonna put, the no parking center?
I, I believe it is, uh, where you would desire it, they would do the investigation and then get back to you on whether they camped it there or someplace else nearby.
So those people who is investigating, can, can we, can we talk to them, I mean, get some information from them? Rather than they just investigating it and then not, not letting us, kinda like, can we have like a mutual communication between? The, the, you know, people who can, who is concerned, like, I mean, our board is very concerned about that, it's been happening for, what, I think over a year now?
Right, correct, I, I, I certainly, I certainly understand, um, we can reach out to them to see if that's possible.
A year.
Uh, and then we can get back to you after that, for sure. If you want, we can send them your phone number, and then if they are available to call, then they can call you.
Okay.
Do you wanna give me your number after the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Concerned.
Thank you, Spencer, thank you, Spencer.
Concerned.
Thank you, oh, some more community concerns.
This not only a little street, but a river, there's, they're, they're not supposed to be parking on a bridge over there. They're parking around the turn of the street, and we gotta go around the car, there is no parking of, of what, how, how far is it? Going around the turn of the, you know, the street corner, they're parking by the fire, uh, fire hydrant, not thirty feet from the stop sign. And they're parking along the, um, the bridge on the top, and all these guys, they going underneath the bridge and camping under for the housing. Cause the housing people, they get, um, security now are chasing them guys out, but where they going to Puyai Street? They don't have license, they're, they're illegal parking all over there, and we don't, like, we had RPC, but we don't wanna complain, because where they going parking? Parking our street now, all the people for the housing, they don't have their license, they parking, hey, look how far they've gotta park and walk. Because it's convenient for them for not, not having a license and parking in our street, and they're walking back and forth. These guys, jaywalking, the cops will even catch them, I tell the cops about, hey, these guys jaywalking, the kids trying to catch chicken, they, they are jaywalking. Sooner or later, somebody gonna whack over there, and then, I just tell them put a complaint before. Say like somebody could get killed over there.
Right, ta- thank you, Mister Oshiro, again for that one, again, is that Malani Eha you said, or Mary?
Yeah, and Puyai Street, the bridge on the river.
Got it, yeah, yeah.
I also put something on that Puyai and, um, La- 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 Lani Eha Street.
Right, right.
There's a, and it says no parking there, um, I, and, and I wanna, I, I wanna say something about that, um.
Government property.
What is the purpose of that, when you say no parking, um, and then there is cars parked there, I mean. Are we gonna enforce the law as far as no parking, or whether, that's the biggest part about what he mentioned.
They gonna park in our street now, there's a, we don't complain about them too much.
So.
Yeah.
I don't know, suggestion anybody in the board, um.
Call cops, yeah, they gotta, they gotta reinforce something, because they're blocking the bridge. Yeah, they gotta reinforce something because they're blocking the bridge. It's over there, no government, government property, no trespassing. There's a sign over there, there'd be a warning over there, no supposed to be parking on a bridge, but yet, on a Saturday night, the second house from the bus stop, I don't know if it'll be a popito game or a coyote. The whole damn, they're even parking in our street, except on the bridge too. That's the problem.
I guess what I'm trying to come out is, are we citizens supposed to just speak out and say, okay, you know what, that's illegal parking, or the police officers or our so-called government is going to fix it?
Thank you. I thoroughly hear you. I do believe it's desirable to definitely call HPD as often as you can to see if they can enforce ticket or tow. They can start from there, and then we can see what we can do after that as well. But it certainly is appreciated, and it shouldn't be happening, and we should do whatever we can to take care of that. I hear you, Mr. Rojas.
As for me, who live in Kalii Valley, all I'm saying is that, I'm not the only person who live in Kalii Valley. There's everybody in this individual room here. We can call the police. That's all I want to say.
Thank you. That's great. Thank you.
And if there are, are there anywhere community concerns, our questions? If not, we can move on, and thank you, Master Clark, right?
Person?
General question?
Darren Mahi, we still know him from St. Island, walking his dogs over there every time, and we love that guy so much. I'm sorry he's gone. I just want to, I just want to press my concern of that man, that humble, sweet man.
Absolutely. A huge loss to Hawaii, its music, its culture, and the Royal Hawaiian Band. And a dear friend of mine as well. Yeah, and he does have, I believe, services planned for public on November the sixteenth at Central Union Church. There is a private service earlier than that coming up on Saturday, but very, very, very difficult to get through that, and quite an amazing human being.
Thank you. Mr. Rojas has one more question.
It just kind of bothered me about the no parking. Is there a purpose of why we put a no parking sign right on the bridge side? Is it for integrity of the bridge, or is it just to put the sign there because we want to put the sign there? What is the reason why we want to put a sign there that says no parking? Because people are parking there, and there's no parking. The sign says no parking, right?
No reinforcing.
So, no, I mean, what is the purpose of that no parking?
Is this the, no, Malani Eha and Piliwai Bridge?
The same bridge.
The same, yeah, the same bridge, so.
The River Bridge.
All bridges you cannot park. All bridges.
Yeah, some citizens also know that, but they ended up doing it.
Well, I just want to find out what the reason. We're gonna leave that parking sign, no parking sign there, just to do that, or?
Declaration.
Or are we going to enforce that?
Then call police.
Police not going to come if nobody called. Somebody got to call.
Did you call?
Oh, they're gonna park in our street, I don't think they'll call, but...
Please, the pathway, you pass by there, right? Because I passed there. Have you called before?
I haven't called the HPD about that, about the parking.
Only now I realize about that no parking sign. He mentioned it, so. So if I see people parking there, I won't call it.
Fuck, dude. Somebody got to call.
So in this room right here, everybody know now that there's a sign there.
They can do anything they like, they're not allowed to do anything they like.
So one last? Mr. Rojas, one last?
Yep, go ahead.
Why don't we talk about this after the meeting, and then we can do some background research on more about, as some area about that? Yeah, so I'll...
I'm gonna confuse that guy.
So we do have to move on to the next thing. But thank you again, Mr. Master Clark, right? Thank you.
Thank you. Can I ask you a question? One other one. Wait, wait, one faster. Bright, are you related to Roy Bright and Teresa Bright's relationship?
Yes, we are related to you.
Yeah, because I don't know the name of the family. The Maduni family, they live right there. I knew them forty, fifty years. And I just wanted to know, I just wanted to know, Roy Bright was my classmate. He was a freaking punk too. See, and then, I know, I know. Okay, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Up next is Councilmember Tyler Dos Santos Tan, office.
Aloha, Chair. Aloha, board members. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, sure.
This is Glid Robinson for Councilmember Dos Santos Tan. I wanted to circle back really quickly with Bandmaster to make sure that I fully understand the investigation for the no parking signs. Bandmaster, was that... I'm gonna make an assumption that the request was put in, and since there's no signage there right now, that probably went to the Department of Transportation Services, and that's who reviewed the request. Okay?
The DTS is gonna be conducting the investigation. Yeah, it'll take a while, because the research, site inspection, traffic study, analysis of collision history as well.
Yeah, and we've just kind of had another related discussion about whether or not parking should be or is allowed on bridges. I know there's another issue about, although there's undesirables that park over there right now. I know that HPD had some concerns about removing that parking that could be potentially used by homeowners and neighbors in the area. So I just wanted to make sure whose hands it was in. I appreciate your feedback.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely. We spoke, just so you know, council members newsletters are in the chat, so September's there and all the previous newsletters. Just wanted to highlight that council members co-introduced legislation for e-bike regulations, co-introduced with Councilmember Talba. So that happened end of August. So you've probably seen some media about it. It's looking at common sense, traffic laws, and then establishing clear classifications so that we have clear guidelines, rules, and enforcement. So moving on to follow up on some things from last time. I wanted to let Mr. Sung know that there was, I put in a request for no parking from three to five sign between, over there on Numano Street. So between twenty-eight oh four and twenty-eight twenty-four. I have not heard back yet, but again, that's just because it took a little while, but I will follow up as soon as I have more information. Councilmember, or board member Franklin had requested an update from the Department of Parks and Recreation about field, park improvements to the field area over at Kalii Uka Park. And we had an extensive conversation, and then she did, was able to respond. I will read the response, just to have, just so that we're all on the same page. "We currently do not have plans to reconstruct that field. That work would likely require some drainage improvements. It's not simply a matter of adding soil amendments. We are working on costing out general field restoration based on our recent work at YPO and Core. I'd like the department to get to a field asset management schedule." So she goes on to say that it'll require some budgeting, and she's got it on the list. "It's gonna be kind of a slow, steady approach to get to all of these fields that need improvements." So we have asked that the Department of Parks and Rec keep in close contact with us so that we can make sure we have a good understanding of what to request to budget those improvements. I know that there were some questions about dog parks, and I, from board member Kumalai, I got that information out to him, and I have that site if anyone has any more questions about that. So Dana, Mr. Yap had made a request about the crosswalk at Kalii and Nobrega. And I have the response from the Department of Transportation Services that says, "Please inform your constituents that we completed our investigation, which included a field inspection and a review of our records. A field inspection confirmed that there are existing driveways on the other side of Kalii Street at the Nobrega intersection. Consequently, the installation of a marked sidewalk cannot be carried out to ensure compliance with ADA regulations. However, according to our records, the mid-block crosswalk that was removed from front of Kalii Uka Park will be reinstalled with additional safety measures on a future project." I think we should all be pretty excited about that. This project is currently in the design stage with a completion date in late 2025 or early 2026. So not as soon as we would like it, but I think that, you know, at least we'll have the crosswalk over there. When they say improvements, let's, who knows? Hopefully, it's just additional articulations for safety. And I'm almost finished. Bear with me. We had another request from Chris Maunu for a traffic study at the three-way intersection of Kalii and Kamanaiki and Wailele Streets. So DTS has followed up with me, Chris has given more information, and they're tracking. We don't... They're looking very, very closely and about to complete their study over there. I would imagine that by our October meeting, I'll have an update on that. And with that, I think that concludes my report. I'd be happy to take any questions back.
Thank you. And are there any questions from the board, Mr. Dulemaga?
Hello, Lynn Clark. I responded back to your email.
Yeah, I gave you your information. I really appreciate that.
Okay, awesome. And then, any response back? I know you reported about the picking of the lines, of the traffic lines, and all the sidewalks from Olo Market all the way to the end. Any feedback?
No. So, I mean, this feedback that I gave you still kind of stands, that they did create a service report, so the project is on the books. The answer that they give us is that that project will be completed when resources are available. So it's in the queue somewhere, but we don't get any further updates on it. But they've got it, they acknowledged it, and it's got a project number.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Any more questions from the board? I think Mr. Franklin online has a question.
Good afternoon, Lynn. I have several questions. Any update on if they're gonna replace those school signs? Or, and if they paint the crosswalks around our elementary school? And I asked it because Safe Routes to School has ten million dollars. And I don't know, I'm trying to look for their website to see what schools they're working on, what area they're working on, spending that ten million dollars. But it seems like in our area, we can't get our kids safely across the street because we can't paint our crosswalk, and we can't... Been trying to get up for a year. That's the first question.
Okay, I appreciate your question. Are we talking, okay, first of all, with the signs, I don't have, and I understand the frustration, and I share your frustration. Those, what should be flashing school time signs? I've not received a response after several follow-ups. Are you referring to repainting crosswalks?
Yeah, around our schools, Kalii, our crosswalks are not painted. But yes, Safe Routes to School, what are they talking about? If we can't even paint crosswalks that kids can walk in so they can sit? They won't paint them going on three years now. The signs we're talking about are the speeding signs, that you go to every other school, and they tell you what your speed is to slow down. So we have two, and the infrastructure is already there. I guess they replaced the new, but that's taken a year. So, and I'm trying to figure out why painting crosswalks and replacing signs when every other school has them, except the area in Kalii, they're done. I'm just trying to figure out why we can't get them done.
I think it's a very fair question. I don't know if you, okay, so we're getting the crosswalk that was in front of Kalii Uka. Now that's gonna get reinstalled. But if there are faded existing crosswalks, please send me those intersect, email me those intersections. I have not had any problem getting DFM out to repaint crosswalks. So maybe it's just that those requests...
It's all the crosswalks around the school. Any school you go to, all the crosswalks are painted. I'll send your pictures of them. I'll get them to you as soon as I get back into town. My next question is, seeing how Chinatown got four hundred cameras, and we've been trying for two years to get cameras in our parks to keep them safe at night. I'm trying to see if they could use the same engineer, because the question for us was that they didn't have anybody intelligent enough to put up cameras where existing lights are. So if Chinatown got forty, I'm wondering why we can't get some for our parks in Kalii?
I can follow up and see, you know, if that's a possibility. We also have to think about who's gonna monitor the cameras, but we've kind of had that conversation. But, I mean, I guess you're saying that the cat's out of the bag, and it's possible in thirty other places?
That's what I'm saying.
Let me follow up.
Parks at night. So that's why, and for the fill, I don't know when she's planning on getting to it, but the reason I asked for the fill at Kalii Uka is because we got four hundred kids in Kalii. They don't come to the playground to play in on green grass so they can take a ball. So if you go back anytime during school, you have every single child playing on concrete. But we have an excellent fill there that the city won't do anything to to make sure that children can have a safe place to play.
I understand, and she understands. I remember she was out there and she saw it. And so it's just...
She says she's not gonna do anything about it.
No, she, no, it wasn't that she's not gonna do anything about it. It's that it'll take considerable improvements that's not just fill and more infrastructure so that it drains better and doesn't get all pitted like that, and it's gonna take some funding. So that's just government, but we're working closely with her.
DM, I know they can protect the kids. Go back.
Real quick, Lynn?
Yes?
So just real quick, there is two emails that Mr. Franklin may want to reach out to in the chat. One of them is for the state coordinator of Safe Routes to School, Taro Lucas. And the other one is the city representative Yamato Sasaki. Both emails are in the chat. You can probably start there to see where we can go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I want to, I have seen one person, Chester actually raised up his hand if you wanted to go, and then we can go in person if that's okay. Chester?
Oh, okay. I just wanted to say, Lynn, after two and a half years getting the crosswalk back across the Kalii Uka Park, it's kind of amazing. Took a while, you know, considering nothing really has changed. You know, it's kind of like, I don't know, what took the sudden revelation that, gee, it's a good idea to get the crosswalk back? You know, just being a little sarcastic here. The other question I would have is, who's then responsible for adding another crossing guard at this new crosswalk for school days? You know, it's just a question you might want to float it out there with DFM?
Yeah, I think that HPD handles crossing guards, but I think they coordinate with the schools. I also know that that's an incredible, those are incredibly difficult positions to fill. I also know that that's an incredible, those are incredibly difficult positions to fill. So if you know anybody, you know, we, just because they're odd hours like that and very part-time, many times it's our, our, um, we're fortunate to have retirees that go into those positions. So maybe something to think about now that we have some time before it gets installed if you know friends or neighbors that might be interested. Um, but it'll be part of the pro, it'll be part of the process, I would think. Um, it, it might be, you know, you know, I, I will follow up with principal just to see if they decide because of, um, pedestrian volume where they, there's just an articulated sidewalk and where they actually might, you know, actually need crossing guards. But it's a very good question. And Chester, it might be that the side, the crosswalk got back because I just said, Mr. Hoag is just not gonna be patient anymore. I'm just kidding. No, I believe that the reasoning is that finally some funding is coming down through this complete street stuff. And we can, we can, um, look forward to some other things in the district improving that way too. It just takes a heck of a lot of time. And, um, I know when we're talking about pedestrian safety like this, it's, um, it's difficult for us to be patient.
Yeah, thank you very much. I just wanted to add one more thing to, uh, pile on. It's, um, and considering the section between Perry Street and Monte Street is a very straight section. And we've been talking about those speeding mopeds and, uh, e-bicycles. What, what's the, uh, policy or, um, what does it take to get maybe a, a speed hump put in near that crosswalk to put him in? Or while they're added, so to speak? Anyway, you, you don't have to answer it now. You can maybe ask those DFM guys, uh, can we get a speed hump put in?
You mean on Kalihia between Perry and Monte?
Correct.
Okay, I will do that.
Preferably where the new crosswalk is gonna be.
Like make it like a raised crosswalk?
Yeah, that would be an excellent idea.
Well, well, I will absolutely, um, send that to them. I'll, I'll put a request in. Thank you for your feedback. Thank you for your request.
I got a question. That's slower, that's lower than where the school is.
Yeah, I think it's better to put them on the school side.
You gotta put it with the school when it's replacing the, the crosswalk at the school.
It's more, it's more-
That's too far down.
Yeah, that's too far down. To be more safe, I think you want to slow down at the school rather than slowing down further up.
Yeah.
I mean, you can put two if you like, if you have the funding, that's fine with me. Because I live Kalihia Valley. It's safer.
It's not an easy thing to put them to put in speed humps. It's not to say that they wouldn't. It has to do with the slope, it has to do with the speed, and then it has to do with their traffic study. So I, we give suggestions and they, just like happened with the crosswalk, right? They come back and say, you know, we have, our engineers looked at it and it would be smarter to maybe put it somewhere else. So our, we're, we just have a, a, a request with a little bit of framework and they will do their study.
Yep, there's two things that we're looking at. Safety at the school and then the other side, what, um, Chester had mentioned is the speeding.
Mm-hmm.
You make the turn, yes, they are going, going down fast, but it's going downhill. Uh, yeah, that's what I see.
But the whole reason for removing the speed bump was there was a federal law that they said that you couldn't have a, a crosswalk in the middle of a block. That's why it was removed.
Oh.
So I was wondering, has the law changed? Because that went in pretty fast.
There's just, I, I, I believe there's just been a lot of exceptions. Where I live over here, there was, yeah, I just think that there's a lot of exceptions. Do you need a crosswalk? But you can't put a crosswalk at the corner because you're blocking driveways and it, it's gonna violate ADA, right? So then, I think that they just carefully examine and will make exceptions.
Okay, Mr. Rojas has one last question.
Lynn, um, just wanna, um, ask about the Kilohana and Kalihia Street. Is, do you have the green-
I'm glad you asked because I meant to, I meant to mention more good news that I was, um, in close touch with Corporal Del Rosario today. They've been, especially since we got the, um, no trespassing signs over there, they've been working diligently, just quietly to, um, to address the issue of the people under the bridge and the dumping and all of that. And I had, um, been in, in touch with our constituent that lives over there and was, um, ready to put another request for investigation to remove, um, illegal dumping, basically. And he said, please hold off. The next two days will be significant. We will have a stored property ordinance. So they'll have a significant presence over there that includes cleaning, includes getting people and property out of that area in the next two days.
Okay.
Thank you. And, um, Mr. Hudson? Any other board members, um, online or in person had a question? Seeing none, any community members? Mr. Sun?
Hi Lynn, this is James. Um, I have a question, uh, House Bill 64. Where does that stand?
Oh, that would be a question for our state representative or, um, maybe some-
That's a city level.
House bill?
Yeah, the-
It's not the House, it should be a ordinance.
Ordinance 64. By, uh, Mr.- By, submitted by partners, I think is the name.
Oh, I probably have to get back to you. What is that, what is the bill relating to?
Uh, if a house is empty for six months or longer, that you end up with a fine. Um, for any houses that are, uh-
No, the empty homes tax. The empty homes tax. You want, um, I can get back with you, but I, um, what's the best way to get back with you?
I guess next month you're at the meeting or?
Okay, sounds good.
Could email as well if you'd like.
You're welcome to email me. I can put my, I don't know if it's helpful if you guys are in person.
We don't see it. Well, I asked Lynn for your email, Lynn.
Yeah, I can also make an email.
Perfect. I just put it in the chat too.
Thank you Lynn. Any more questions, um, from the community online or in person? Yes?
Who is young at JPO Sunday? I was on JPO. I would like to know if there's any JPO still on JPO duty anymore? For the, uh, especially in elementary schools where, where there's younger kids and for the crossing of places.
Kalihuaina yet?
Kalihuaina, yeah.
Kalihuaina? Kalihuaina schools still have?
JPOs.
Do you want to know if the, if the program exists in general or at a, at a specific school?
Um, if it's still going on because we're doing JPOs, we, we have to do our job by crossing crosswalks and whatever. But now I look, like, there's no JPOs around for safety of the, the kids, especially in an elementary school, um, age of areas, you know what I mean? There's no, I don't see too much of like they said, Kalihuaina of Kalihia Elementary. I don't see them. Yeah. So is it still existed or?
Yeah, yeah, right.
Is the, is the city or did they? So who implements it? Is that, is it, uh, schools or?
I would think that that's likely a DOE program, but I don't know for sure and I would be happy to research.
It's a good practice for the kids to be there for the children.
Well, I, I know, I know exactly what you're talking about. Both of mine are JPOs. I mean, I understand, I'm familiar with the program. I just would have to follow up about, I don't know, why we're not seeing it in Kalihia.
Thank you. Are there any more questions from the community online or in person? Seeing and hearing of Mr. Hudson?
Lynn, um, I was thinking, you know, Complete Streets has done some really interesting work on, uh, quick build projects, you know, around schools where they do like a mural on the ground, you know, as, as like a, a way of highlighting and making it really visible, the area that's safe to walk. And I was thinking that might be something that we should explore doing for some of these areas that, that were, you know, where the crosswalk is, is no longer visible and, um, where some volunteer help might, might be useful in, uh, in getting the work done more quick, uh, more quickly.
That sounds reasonable.
But then I was like-
Um, do you have an example? Do you know, like, is where you're, so that I can reach out to them and say similar to another school?
There's one by Stevenson. I think there's one down Harrington.
Harrington.
Um, and they're really beautiful. You know, it's a way of, of kind of celebrating kind of community pride, you know?
And it's on the street?
It's on the street itself, yeah.
Nice.
Well, yeah.
Or, or one in Chinatown, a king right on, uh-
Right, by the ball bounce, yeah.
The, uh, the mall over there.
Yeah.
I'm gonna reach out and ask. Thanks.
Thank you. And if there are no more community concerns, I want to thank Lynn Robinson and have a good evening.
You too. Thanks guys.
Um, now up next, next on the agenda is state elected officials. Governor Josh Green, Representative Deputy Director Kristen Sakamoto. Is Governor? Is Representative here? Well, if not, then we can always, um, move on to, um, Senator Donna Mercado Kim's chair.
Can I yield my time to Mr. Park?
Yeah.
From HPJ, I'll go after.
Okay, okay. If you'd like to do that, we can table, um, Donna Mercado Kim.
And then I'll go afterwards.
Okay, got it. So then we can bring up, um, Hawaii Public Housing Authority. So this is actually item number D. Um, Hawaii Public Housing Authority Chief Planner Benjamin Park. Or, yeah. Kind of changing the order a little bit.
Hey, everyone. Ben Park, HPJ. Uh, I heard there were some concerns, uh, the last meeting, uh, about, uh, the community center at Kalihia Valley Homes. So I just wanted to let you guys know, we actually had funds appropriated the past two years from Senator Kim, about 1.8 million, 1.2 million. Anyway, we've, uh, selected a consultant to handle the process of demolishing and rebuilding it. Uh, we're in the process of negotiating the fee, uh, how much we're gonna pay them. So once all of that is taken care of, then we'll announce in public, uh, which company we've chosen. And when we go forward with the redevelopment process, we involve in the community to see what their ideas are, what they want to see. Other than that, I want to thank Chair Lea for inviting me here. I'm always happy to answer any questions or maybe I'll zoom in next time.
Um, to do it though, Kalihia Valley Playground area of, of housing, what's the plan of, because all these kids, they're coming in all neighborhood, except staying in their neighborhood and causing trouble in their neighborhood. Because there's no playground I see over there, no recreation. You know, all they, they used to have a best basketball court with nets on it where they guys used, like, the guys I used to go at my age, used to go up there and play basketball, used, used to have a good fun. They had games going over there. But now there's no more net, nor, um, playground area where they can hang or stay. And all the kids, they're coming in all neighborhoods, you know, park area and hanging, except keeping the trouble in their area. Let, let them stay in, play in their, you know, area.
Okay.
The playground and the recreation.
As a former neighborhood member myself, Chair, I mean, if you're okay with answering this question before the board, I'd be happy to.
Well, I do see, um, does it, any board members wanted to add on to the question by any chance? So that way it's kind of addressed. Because I just see, um, Mr. Franklin online who has his hand up. Um, is it just the answer after he answered?
Okay, okay, no problem. But it's funny to know outcome there's no-
There's been a lot of that.
The thing is that it goes in order, so they have to board.
Okay, okay.
First thing to go in.
But you opened up the question.
Cool, cool.
Yeah, I don't like, don't, I don't like, so I don't like-
Mr. Franklin, online, uh, did you want to, uh, answer your-
Yes, I just wasn't sure, uh, was that he's representing where he's from? I, I wasn't sure.
Oh, I'm not sure.
He's, uh, from the Kalihia Valley.
Housing.
I'm sorry.
I'm with the Public Housing Authority.
Over at Cam 4.
Kalihia Valley Homes.
Yes, answering for-
I don't, I don't work there. I work for the, the administration office.
Right, I got it. My, my question is-
This always happens.
Has there any, uh, community outreach to the people there to uplift, empower them? So this board can go there and present ourselves to the board? So is, do they have any meetings that we can go to that, that uplifting and empower the people there to get a better life?
Unfortunately, not that I know of right now. They don't have a resident association.
So we, we, we- Zero living, empowering in a community. Because we always, we're always talking about the crime in that community. But the problem is, there's no outreach from anyone in Hapa to help those kids get ahead. And so in this board, I'm asking, uh, how do we present ourselves to a board if there's nothing there for them?
That's a good question. I, I don't know what the answer is.
So let me ask you another question, because I've never seen in three years any effective fit. In my three years on this board, I have never seen any to have a town hall over at Cam 4. So my question is, is Cam 4 too dangerous for anybody to go over there?
Uh, first of all, it's, uh, not too dangerous. Um, it is technically close to the public.
Close.
State law where you're not allowed to be in there if you're not a tenant or a guest of the tenant. But, you know, our people-
Well, I'm talking about our elected officials. I see that our elected officials, they, uh, uh, they have town hall meetings everywhere. So is it too dangerous for our elected officials to go over there and represent their constituents? Because I've never seen an elected official have a town hall meeting to do anything with the people over at Cam 4. You already told me there is no help for them. There's no committee, there's no outreach, there's no uplifting, there's no empowerment. There's absolutely nothing going over there, except we just say that they're criminals.
Well, that's a lot of words to put in my mouth because I didn't say that.
Right, but anyway, I'm just saying that there's nothing over there for them. You just admitted there's no committees. There's no committees we can go to as a board to present ourselves to, to the people of Cam 4.
I think your internet connection cut out when I explained to the board here in person that, you know, we actually set aside a budget of $1,500 for the residents to actually form a tenant association. Uh, we actually encourage that, but we don't make them do it. They have to want to do it. And as far as elected officials holding town hall meetings, I mean, isn't this board normally across the street from Kalihia Valley Homes? I know you guys are here tonight or for a certain amount of time, but this neighborhood board has been in existence for quite a long time. I've been to, uh, these meetings before you guys, all of you members here. I've been to those meetings.
I got a question for you, sir. Are you a state agency or you a city agency?
We're state agency.
So is the state representative, like the, the governor, who decided with your organization that they, they need no committees, no empowerment, no uplifting for the people in Cam 4? Because I know you said we put out $800, but they weren't organized. But it don't seem like you trying to organize them whatsoever. It looked like everyone just trying to keep them quiet and keep them on subsidies. Where's the uplifting? Where's the empowerment? You answered my question. Thank you. I just-
Oh, you're welcome, sir. Always glad to help.
Are there any more questions from the board online or in person?
I have one here.
Oh, Mr. Rojas?
Oh, Mr. Park. From, you know, like what you had said, um, it's not open to the public. From, you know, like what you had said, um it's not open to the public for people to be there. So as a neighborhood security watch, for example, if that's part of our community, we should be able to go there, right? No? Not at all.
We could go to, understanding friends.
So
If you have a friend, yeah, you're invited, yes, yeah, you go there, but
Right, right, so yes, we do have a friend, we do have friends, friends that we went to school with or we knew from, you know, from many years or whatever. And uh but the word when you say it's not open to the public, it's like
It's a state law.
It's a law?
Yeah.
That means we can't
If you have no business there, you know, you're not allowed to be there.
Like any other part.
I I don't
So so the
Yeah.
So for the, so for the business, for for a business, for safety, for the community, that's still it's there's 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 a wall there still, like
Well, we encourage them to create uh community facilities themselves.
Yeah, because you know why, I asked those, I asked the the people who live there to be part of the neighborhood board security members, but they they don't wanna do that, you know? And so that's the people, so that means because it's not open to the public and they are somehow like separated from the public, because we don't have no influence in there, because we're not allowed to go in there purely, the way it's stated.
You're you're talking about security neighborhood watch outside of the public housing property, right?
Well, because the people belongs in the in in the housing, we would like to interact with them as far as, you know, keeping their community, you know, and and our community, so it doesn't, so together.
Together.
Um so that's what makes it very kind of very hard. Now I understand your situation.
Yeah.
And then now I understand what, for limited
So so you've been asking them to join you guys and they just decided they didn't want to?
Yeah, sure, of course, that's my, that's that was my job, but I didn't know, I didn't know the um uh the regulation as far as like you know, unless we're in Hawaii, you know, so if they say no, that means
I mean, they're like regular people, right? People come to this meeting because they want to, like I chose to be there.
Right.
So, you know, we can't force people in public housing to join meetings and
I mean, they wanna join, there, some people wants to join, but it's it's the environment, they scared for them to do the good thing, because you know what I mean, it's like you're fighting the whole neighbors over there, you know what I'm saying, like you know, they they get picked on and stuff like that, I mean, I feel I feel for those people, cuz you know why? I myself, even back from Iraq, Afghanistan, Desert Storm, I I need freedom in this world. Why not that we cannot be part of that public over there, that's impossible, because this is United States.
I mean, organize your friends, I mean, I mean, I have nothing against that.
No, no, I I I know, but I think that 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 word you know, the public is not open to the public, it feels like a prison, prison place to me. It's
It's not prison, they they're free to
No, they they free, but it feels like, it's like there's a border there for me to go there. I I don't have no business going there, because guess what, there's a there's a word, it says it's not open to the public area.
It's, oh, sorry, um oh, sorry, Mr. Sun, um I think it's maybe explaining a little more on that, because it doesn't have to do with the liability and I know you had to state law, but it's not where, you know, I think there's fundamental reasons behind those reasons why they're saying, you know, no public, but like, um Ben was saying, right? It's like, it's not preventing people in there from going, but you know, like you said, it's hard, how would we sell the social stuff, just speak up.
I'll just, that that word, it's not open to the public, meaning like, if, sorry, I gotta be invited to go in there.
It's like, it's like something like
Well, that's kind of like an apartment building, right?
It's like any other community.
Like
You don't just go to any any apartment building, right?
No, I mean, it's it's
Look, wait, you know, what if on behalf of like on uh government agency, you know, the neighborhood board trying to go in so that we can uh present like a program that can uh be like, you know, benefit to the residents. I mean, you know, we're not going there as individuals, but we're going there representing an organization that looking out for the benefit of the residents. I mean, and not just walking through, but coordinating with your office and, you know, presenting our uh our program and then requesting permission through the proper channels to access the property and present our program of uh, you know, maybe sports program or, you know
You guys have neighborhood sports programs?
Walk, you know, you know There's such just an example of how we would try and request access to the property. Not as an individual citizen, just I I wanna walk on a property with no reason. You know, we, I know we cannot do that, right, as a private citizen accessing a property, but what if we came with a purpose?
We we work with a lot of nonprofits.
Yeah, yeah, like that.
They may have a a million dollars in liability insurance.
Okay.
They also have to have a sign an affidavit saying
Right.
Now, I
Whole partners.
Yeah, 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 okay, so there's ways where outsiders can access the property.
We work with a lot of nonprofit organizations to uplift
Yeah, so it's not completely uh inaccessible, just have con- conditions that we gotta meet to get in there.
And that, and Chair, and one of the easiest conditions, sir, is as what you stated, is you have to be invited from a friend or someone who lives there, now, do they have to ask you to invite us?
No.
Gotta go to the office to get a prisoner's pass.
No.
If you don't have a prisoner's pass, you don't allow to be here.
No, it's coming from the administrator.
Yeah, no, if if you're a guest and you're visiting a tenant at a public housing properties, you're allowed to go in.
I've done it a lot of times.
So so when you say, uh so when you say it's not open to the public, meaning like in general, meaning like it's
Uninvited person, you gotta be invited.
Yes.
So
And that's why you can put the security there. So that way he can he can he can tag and identify who's coming in.
Yeah, that property does have a security
Yeah, I see, I see, yes, okay.
And are there any, are there any more questions from the board uh online or in person? Uh I do see Mr. Franklin's hand up again, if you have another question.
Really quickly, I I don't wanna get off track, cuz here's the deal, I don't know crime I've never seen a crime stat over there, so I don't know if there's crime over there. My point is that, the point I'm making is that it's just embarrassing for a state and government agency to have no outreach to uplift those young minds there, to get them in the right course, so they don't repeat or end back up in housing. And the mere fact that we're saying that they should rally themselves, we talking about some of the most disadvantaged people in Hawaii that we think they should organize themselves. It is just shameful that our elected officials and the people that's representing those people over there have neglected them and turned them out. It that's just embarrassing, but I don't know the crime, and I don't know what else do either, cuz I've never seen a crime stat from Cam Four yet. But we don't know, talked to anybody in Cam Four in three years. So I don't wanna get off track, I just think that's embarrassing for all our elected officials and the people that are running Cam Four at Hapa, I feel like I'm done with this.
Well, everybody has their opinions.
And if, is there no question from the board at this time, we have questions from the community.
Is that a state-owned property?
It is a state-owned property that is federally subsidized public housing property.
So you're saying it's owned by the state, but supplied money from federal government?
Yes.
I I I see, I see.
And then, Mr. Sun?
I'm gonna play devil's advocate here, so for you guys trying to get access to a property, they did that, I don't know when you guys stuck a lot of people to just walk on, cuz back in the eighties and nineties, you could just walk on. They did that to reduce crime, right, people were going there selling drugs, doing all sorts of various things to reduce crime. They played a special role, no big deal, I mean, to to reduce and make the area safer, I mean, I don't know if you remember back in the eighties and nineties, crimes are horrible in all those public houses, so that's the reason why they did that. So they did that to reduce crime, don't get upset at that. But from our side, right, the problem is now with the no access and uh uh all this stuff with the, especially with the the cars, right, um you need driver's license, you need registration, you need a a safety sticker, you need all these things just to park the car there, right? Now it's taking all the cars and pushing into the neighborhood, and you've been, I don't, you've been there for a long time. So talking about parking on the bridges and parking all around, this is the only neighborhood that has this R T C there. And and because of that, that's what they're frustrated about, they don't understand what the why there's crime just going everywhere within the valley, right? But it's because these people can't park and they don't understand what's going on, so it's a two twofold thing, you see, the crime is inside the housing, or you know, cuz people are accessing it or the crime's going on in the community, because they're parking there and then they're, uh, crime of opportunity. They parked the car there, they walking around, breaking into cars on the way back. So it's just took your problem that was in the state property, you know, throwing it into the community, and we're trying to figure that out. And I'm playing devil's advocate here, you know, not saying who's right or wrong.
Not all of them are criminals.
Not all of them are criminals, but that's what they're talking about, right, here? And and um if we work through Senator Kim's office, I'm pretty sure we could find a nonprofit to get onto the property and we could work with the uh Senator and uh and uh the House uh, as you know, to come up with programs, you know, we can't just be blaming him in his department for everything. There are other ways to do it, my only question to you now is, how can we utilize you, right? And and using your your office to the best of our ability?
Well, I think it starts with uh the Chair, Chair Lea, thank you for reaching out to me and uh we already, I let her know that we're working with adult friends for you. So they're very, very eager and hoping that we contract that uh community center demolition and rebuilding cuz they, they wanna be a part of it. And so we've had several visits with them, several visits with um their youth. Uh we've had several visits with elected officials, Senator Kim, Senator Kitani. Uh they got us the money to do this, I mean, you guys know how long that thing's been vacant.
So The so, sir, the funding is still coming from state.
Yeah.
Which is us taxpayers' money.
Yeah.
Right?
Thank you.
So and we're asking for safety on the outside, you know what, since we cannot even come in, we have time coming in, I mean, if it stays in that housing and we stay from the outside, that's no problem. Because you know when a shooting came out, it came out from the outside.
Yeah.
And and it's and the influence of, like you said, their parents could be, they, I mean, they are innocent, parents are innocent, but again, it's the influence on how we maintain our our kids, how we upbringing them, and how we go, you know, uh how we teach them and stuff like that, but it 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 goes back to again, it's it's the responsibility of that housing, and you, that's your, that's you guys' job, I'm sorry to point it out, point out something.
I understand, we're housing enforcement.
Right?
We're not law enforcement.
No, no, I know that, but if you, so that's the reason why we wanna speak to you folks, that we wanna let you guys know what's going on.
That's why
And it's and and, yeah, exactly, thank you for coming, and and that we live there, we live there, we live next to them, and and Alan then lived there, it's right, right on, right across the street.
I'm sure I'll be working our elected officials.
And 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 to me, I think it's not the elected officials, I think it's to me, it's we we gotta follow the rules and regulations based on how to run that thing.
Here, we follow all laws, rules and regulations, so
Yeah.
So I guess my question is, I understand that me as a public person can't go in there and dictate your rules, but how about the people coming out of there and messing with our side of the streets?
Exactly.
That's my concern, I'm not worried about what's going on, but when people that live there are coming down my street and making it hard for me to live on my street, that's the question, how I go about a solution to that?
And who's responsible for that?
Who's gonna call the police?
No, 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 who who's who's responsible for that, because that's your public area.
No, he's talking about his side of the area.
Well, it's, that's what I meant, I mean, it's like, since you guys have the entity or or the power to control this this housing, so what, like like example, you think we would, we wouldn't have it? If that housing was in one eye or or in the mountain, you think we would have that problem on the outside?
Well, we do have housing in Miami.
No, no, I mean
But uh
One people housing is my kind of
No, but Mr. Ross, I'll answer your question, but getting back to your your question, we have to call the police.
Okay.
We cooperate with the HPD on any, you know, if an investigation was if they happen to be one of our tenants, we'll take appropriate action.
Alright, good.
Getting back to you, HPD handles law enforcement, right, we handle housing enforcement. They do issues, they do crimes, or they get in trouble, it comes back
To you.
To the tenant. The tenant is responsible for their family members and their guests.
That's all I wanted to hear, so you guys do take that responsibility, based on what the outcome will
The biggest stick that we have is eviction. If he wants to get evicted, and we don't want to evict people either, if they're doing dangerous crimes outside in the public, I'm sorry, but that's the only way we can have a hold our tenants accountable for the actions of their family members, for the actions of their friends and guests that come on tour.
That's fair.
Jason, the program that you talked about in the community center, who's gonna guess govern that thing, since it's not gonna be city or state person, right? It's gonna be a federal person or
No, 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 so we we administer the public housing program on behalf of the federal government. So that community center will be under the administration of the Hawaii Public Housing Program.
Okay, so then, if they wanted to do like a basketball program, a volleyball program and stuff like that, is that gonna be under the housing authority or we said, it's gonna
Well, we don't, we're still trying to um select the contractor, but when we do the the redevelopment and demolition of everything, there are several possibilities that could happen, one is we will lease it to a nonprofit and they will run the center, or we will just hold it openly if we can get a resident association to run it. They can, they can administer it, or probably just hire more staff and we could administer it. But I'm thinking we're gonna lean towards contracting it out with a nonprofit, so we'll request we'll put out a request for qualifications or information, asking for different packages on what we can provide the community. And then we might go that way, but nothing is set in stone, because we're still trying to figure out what the community wants to do.
Uh, Mr. Lawrence?
Maybe I get uh the adult friends for you, maybe a possible venue, for them to get help assist with the project. And also, um, we'd love to get updates uh on the whole process, it's been a long time for the UAB community
Long time.
To, you know, hear anything from there, so you know, if you have the chair, for us to get, you know, updates on the the whole process, and then even being there for the groundbreaking too, that'd be amazing.
Sure.
I wanted to invite him to the communications committee meetings, in case that was like better for your time, right, like five thirty, like I don't want me to work outside of hours.
No, I'm saying, I wanna watch that.
But yeah, thank you again for being here, if um that is, uh if that's all my questions, or my community
Oh, I just wanted to know what took so long for you to have something for those kids? You know, what was, cuz even just to have an outdoor basketball court like Mr. Washiro mentioned, to me, it's kind of common sense, kids need to be able to play in the neighborhood where they live. I grew up in clam housing, the Emira Homes, and we had a area, like a multi-purpose area, you know, with playground and biddy boxing and, so back then, was it always nonprofits, or did the housing actually, you know, have people on staff?
I I've been with the housing authority for about ten years now, uh my understanding was the playgrounds and My understanding was the playgrounds and my grandparents lived in their housing. I'm part of the community as well. But from the playgrounds, when kids get hurt, liabilities increase. And so a lot of the playgrounds were removed. And so the issue is, is that why it took so long? I could think of a number of reasons, but probably the biggest one is funding. There was no funding and, you know, I'm kind of very appreciative of Senator Kim and Senator Pita for coming to get that. But, you know, it's just, if you guys don't know, we have a lot of backlog repairs that need to be done. And even though the federal government has the biggest pockets, it's not always coming towards us.
I understand, we understand.
It takes time and, you know, it's finally here, so we're gonna need a sheepherder to develop that place.
So my other question is, what kind of programs do you have going on for the kids right now? You said you do work with some nonprofit?
Oh, we have Adult Friends for You.
Yeah, what are they doing with the kids?
Oh, I don't know exactly what they're doing. I just know that they go and they leave and they hang out. I'm sure they're, they have some kind of programs just to keep them busy.
Because I think what we want to say is, we don't dislike the people here. You know, because they come to high by elementary, they go to Dole, they go to Tarnton. That's all part of our neighborhood. So I think the consensus is, we would like to work with them, you know, together and let them know, hey, how can we help your families and your kids? Because, you know, rather than look at them like, like what was mentioned earlier, you know, where they can't, they can't play in the housing, there's nothing for them. So they come outside and they're like, you know, kind of buckle loose like, you know.
Catching chickens.
You know, so we want to work together. So if we can keep an ongoing relationship with you, that would be also helpful.
And the nonprofit, do you have a contact for them that we can reach out to?
Uh, it's the C E O. I don't want to hurt the name of that.
If you could find it and get it to it, maybe we can get her to come here?
I can provide her with the, yeah.
There's a number, so I can call them and see.
So it's a part, if there's.
On the.
Mr. Ross?
Yeah, so it's a part, you know. If, if there's, there's people, if there's family members or friends that lives there and it's a lot income housing and that's what they can afford. And they don't want to move out, but.
I have to, so actually their income is based on thirty percent. Their rent is based on thirty percent of their income. So if they make three hundred dollars, they get a hundred dollars for that.
Right. Because that's what they can afford in this. But my, my, my point is that, I mean, those people want to live there, but they cannot afford to go out. Because it's the environment, you know, like they, they suffering over there. I see their suffering.
They're suffering.
Yeah, they're suffering from, from the action, the people who live there. Because it's, it's like they, they got organization over there that controls the inside, you know?
Like I said to you earlier, you know, I don't have to know names. I don't have to.
No, I'm not saying anything. I'm just concerned.
You can just provide me with information. And I won't mention anything, who I got it from, whatever. I'll talk to the property manager.
Well, that's the thing, that's what we wanted to know, like bring in the property manager, talk to him and know about, you know, the situation for people. Because we don't want to say, well, you know what, I know this person, I want to report it to you, manager, and then guess what happened? What's up their car and they robbed their house? You know, that, that kind of, that's the, that's the action behind. And that's why we just want to, we just want to know what's really going on on the inside. I mean, for me, because that's my job. I volunteered to be a neighborhood security coordinator. That's part of our community right there. The people in there comes out to our community. So we want to talk to the people who maintains that area. That's what we asking for. But when, you know, when I hear this, it's, it's not, it's like, eventually when you say it's not open to the public there. It's like, man, this big restriction.
It's really bothersome, yeah.
It's a big restriction, you know what I mean? It's like we telling a soldier, you know what, you're not allowed here, period, you know?
I don't make the law when I hear whatever.
No, 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 the law is the law, the law is the law. Respect the law, because you know what, without the law, we're not, we're not, we're not gonna be able to communicate with, you know, with each other and in our community. We need to communicate, that's, that's, and then because get these small barriers as part of, it's not open to the public. We can make it happen still, you know? We can make it happen. And so that's why we ask humbly to your administration and maybe you can ask the leaders to work with us, our, our small community, neighborhood community.
Yeah, yeah, talk to your friends and, you know, try to spread the word within the property. Just wire or something, but I can't make them want to do this.
No, it is not one trying to make them, it's their safety.
Saying that because you're saying you want them to do it.
I'm just trying to figure out the safety of them because of the environment in the housing. That's you guys' responsibility doing. If I, if I was a soldier there to watch that place and I, somebody die in there or some, somebody inside there do something on the outside, it's my responsibility on the inside.
Send me your concerns.
Mr. Ross, I will work with you and we'll come up with a solution. But there is a pathway and he did explain it. Sorry, I forgot your name.
Oh, Kathy.
Kathy explained that there is a pathway. We will get it done and we will work on it. But right now, there's other things we need to talk about, but yes, it will be taken care of. And we will come up with a plan, I guarantee, okay?
Mr. Nasty?
I just had a suggestion on possible next steps, which is maybe we organize a, maybe it's another subcommittee or it's a permitted interaction group or something. I don't know what the structure is, but just a meeting where we invite the people that we do know from you who live at Clean Valley Homes, like, you know, like Dindo, Cabrillo lives there. I know a bunch of folks, we can just invite them to come and just talk story.
But it's scared, I have friends, I have friends that goes Kukouakali Valley, that serve that community. They sell food to them, they work with them, but I said, hey, could you be, be more involved in the community? They said, scared man.
Step up.
That's what I'm trying to say. But you know what, it did be flashback. I had friends that died there. And I had friends that died on the outside of Camp Road. That's what it feels like on the inside, okay? So that's why, for the safetiness of the people who live there, I'm very concerned on the activities that I do. You know what I mean? Luckily, I'm still breathing, you know? Luckily, I'm still alive to make a change.
Yeah.
Because you know what, it's been so many years, what, like you said, nineteen eighty, nineteen ninety? I seen that. I lived that, I lived through it, but I'm still alive. But do you want that to happen again? That's what I'm just saying in this, in this meeting right here, you know? We have good leaders. All we have to do is enforce our law, enforce our regulation. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for asking.
And I don't know if Kristin Sakamoto, I do see her name online, are you there? Kristin?
Yes.
So Governor Josh Green's representative, Kristin Sakamoto, if you'd like to. Oh, we're not able to hear you. I do see that you're unmuted. Is the volume?
Is your microphone unmuted? If you have an external mic?
Maybe that was the issue last time.
Yeah, we see your WebEx is unmuted, but we can't hear you.
Yeah. I don't know if the tech issue, if it's okay, should we, we can go back to you if it's fixed later on and we can move on to?
You can also, you can also put anything in the chat too and we can read it over here.
Yeah.
If you have any quick.
But we can move on then to Senator Donald McConnell Kim's representative.
We can get everyone in chair, members of the board, community members. So pretty much we covered Senator Kim's community report throughout this meeting. So we covered the open burning with A G F T and then with Mr. Oshiro, the clean and sober homes. So, you know, I'm open to take any questions from the community. I can try to answer it or take it back to Senator if there are any.
Okay, are there any questions from the board online or in person? For Senator Donald McConnell Kim seeing, oh, actually I do see Mr. Franklin's hand just popped up. Okay.
I just want to relay a message to Senator Kim. I would like to thank her for her knowledge and information she has provided this board, uh, telling us the methods and means we need to get things done for this community. I want her to know that if this board is not functioning on all cylinders, it's this board's fault. Because she have told us what we need to do to be an effective board. I just want to know that we, it's on the job training for us and we're learning on the curve. And I hope she is not too frustrated with us. But I thank her for telling us about resolutions and the things we need to do to make this board effective. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
I'm sure she, you know, on behalf of Senator, I'm sure she greatly appreciate your words, say. You know, that's what we're here to do is we just want to work together. Nobody's against each other. We all just want to work, you know? Everybody has their own opinions, different ways of doing it, but we just want to come together and, you know, do what's best for the community. So thank you, Mr. Franklin. I will take back your kind words to Senator, appreciate it.
Thank you. Any more questions from?
I just wanted to say thank you for bringing Mr. Park here. And that means a lot to us because now at least we're once, one leader's step.
Yeah. Senator, you know, and that's the thing is, you know, sometimes things work slow, sometimes they work fast. But Senator, in the last meeting, she heard your concerns and so she reached out right away. And I believe it was maybe the day after or the next day, Chair Obama was there. She was, you know, so it's you are being heard. That's what, that's what Senator wants you all to know.
And now we know why, you know, we're always wondering like, oh, okay, we, they don't have a basketball court or.
Sad in the world, so sad.
It's, it's, it's set wrong.
No. Sis. Senator, thank you very much for you coming out for helping us with this.
Oh, I appreciate it, I am. It's my pleasure to be here, meet you all in person, but, you know, and that's the thing is, a lot of times it's education, right? Like Mr. Stone was saying, is like understanding the background of things, you know, kind of knowing the procedure. Because it's, it is frustrating. I wouldn't know a lot of these things because I, you know, until I worked for the state myself and then now working for Senator Kim. So I worked at Department of Taxation, then I went to work for Senator Kim. So it's, it's a learning process. You pick things up over the years, you find things out. So it's, you know, our office would be more than happy to help if, you know, point people in the right direction. Because it is, it is confusing for, you know, even for state employees to get things done, it's confusing. Working for Senator's office, we go through hoops too. Sometimes we had to call it twenty, twenty different lines before we get somebody. So we face the same challenges.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it, thank you guys.
Are there any more questions from the board or community online or in person?
Will she come in here and question my day?
Oh, she actually was trying to, she really wanted to come today. And then she thought that the meeting was next week. So that's why she was like, oh no. Like Mr. Park was coming and then also Mr. Oshiro was concerned. So she was actually planning to come, but she got the Palama and the Kalih Valley meetings mixed up because they're next week going today.
Yeah, yeah, they're the same.
Four months, we're the second.
Yes, so I think that was on her mind, but, you know, she definitely has it in. It's just unfortunate during session time, it's busy and Senator is actually, has quite a busy schedule, even though, you know, they're only working part of the year. But she's one of those that are working full time, so.
Is there, I did want to ask quickly, there are any more questions from the community online in person? For Senator Donald McConnell? It's like a lot of thank yous, which is great.
And that's always nice.
Yeah. And if that's it for now, though, I do want to thank you again for coming out and I think you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then up next, I just want to check back on Governor Josh Green's representative, Kristin Sakamoto. If there's any improvement on her end about the tech issues or any reports we can read off for her? And if not, sort of.
She said that she could take any questions or concerns.
Okay.
Because she can hear us, we just can't hear her.
Yeah.
So are there any questions or concerns for Governor's office?
Any questions from the board or community? If not, Mr. Ross, yes.
I guess what I want to ask her is, I hope that, well, it's not asking her. Well, I would, yeah, I would like to ask her to support us with this problem. And because she's the highest.
Which?
Our, our housing office.
Okay.
Camp, Camp Road housing, sorry. And I would like to hear from her and I would like to hear from her administration and what they get to say about it. Because they are, they are the highest general commander. I want to hear it from their administration. And I hope I can, we can get some feedback on our next meeting.
And then we have Brandy online.
Mr. Franklin, do you have a question? Yes, hand up, yes.
I just wanted to know, there's no, uh, uh, community uplifting or outreach to the people? Uh, how projects started? I mean, they campaign on that all the time about uplifting and outreach and trying to get our most devastated people, uh, uh, a hand up in life. It seem like we care more about the homeless than we do about the people in Camp Four because we got all kind of outreach programs for the homeless. We have zero for the young people in Camp Four to achieve a better life. So I want to know if the governor know that's happening and what he plans to do about it. I mean, at least treat them as fair as we do the homeless.
Thank you. Um, and if there are no more questions online or in person for Governor, Governor Josh Green's representative, we can move on to Representative May Mizuno. She sent us a newsletter yesterday, but cannot attend tonight, so I can read a summary of the newsletter. So it says, Representative May Mizuno would like to share a few activities and concerns she's been working on regarding homelessness, crime and infrastructure improvements. Representative Mizuno organized a meeting on July ninth at the Capitol with key stakeholders to discuss and address the homeless communities near the bridge and surrounding areas of Kalih and Kiloana Street. With the city's support, they successfully installed four no trespassing signs in the area, which will allow H P D to effectively enforce trespassing laws. On July thirtieth, in collaboration with Councilmember Los Santos Tam's office, a letter was promptly sent to D O T, Department of Transportation, to address a constituent report of a broken directional arrow at the corner of Makohine Street and Kalih Street. On August second, D O T sent confirmation with a tracking number for the repair process. August twenty, oh, August nineteen, a constituent was concerned about abandoned cars and vehicles from neighboring areas of Kiloana Street, making it difficult to find street parking. Mizuno's office reached out to Councilmember's office for assistance in local abandoned vehicles and exploring potential solutions for residents. Lynn, the constituent service director from Councilmember's office, visited Kilo, Keno Street, identified an abandoned car partially encroaching into the no parking here to corner zone and will submit a R I S R, request for information and service request, addressing the vehicle to the city's managing director. Finally, on July first, Mizuno's office sent a letter to the Director of Transportation Services addressing traffic safety concerns due to the ongoing dangerous conditions at the four-way intersection of Halla Drive and Kapalama Street that have led to several accidents. Monday, August twelfth, there was a serious incident where a resident was struck by a car that ran a stop sign and required hospitalization, underscoring the urgent need of improvements. On August fifteenth, a follow-up letter proposing potential solutions such as speed bumps as a result of the accident or roundabout that was considered in the past while acknowledging the challenges of implementing such a measure. As of now, Mizuno's office awaits a response from the Department of Transportation Services. Please contact any issues or concerns you may have with Representative Mizuno's office. There is no issue too large or too small. The doors of my office are always open to you because it is your office too. You are my employer and I will always answer to you. You are my employer and I will always answer to you. And you can also email questions Representative Mizuno to me and I can forward them to her. Are there any questions um for the board online or in person? Seeing and hearing none, any questions from the community online or in person, I can always send the questions back to Representative Mizuno. And if not, um then we can actually move on to um committee reports and assignments. So uh Sustainability Committee. I I did wanna note, I made a mistake, um that was the reason for the committee names being mixed up, cause I tried to have both communications and sustainability on the same day, two weeks after our last month meeting, but uh it was just sustainability, I was able to, but what happened was I copied communications, I forgot to change the name, therefore there was a mix up. Uh so I just wanted to hold up to that and or leave it to Mr. Rohan in the future.
Yeah.
But if you had any follow up?
Yeah, I I would like to announce that uh we did have our uh first um um meeting at uh Decore Park on Prairie Street. And uh we had, community came out and uh we talked about uh mainly um Decore Park as being a community garden. And at this point, we just you know, taking survey as far as the neighbors around the neighbors. If they would like the community garden. And also, we also discussed about um you know, community Kena um as far as like, you know, uh Kilohana and Kalih Street. Right now, we're just uh we're just waiting up on the green light as what um Lynn Robinson had mentioned on the CD side. Uh we're waiting for the green light as far as once they pair the, you know, the personnels under the bridge who should be able to go. And uh we encourage the community to come out to um help out Kilohana and Kalih Street for Kena in that area. And that's all I have for sustainability.
You have you have anticipated date for when the clear will take place?
Uh as far as what I what I asked her the question earlier. Uh she said there's been good news about, you know, like they already put the sign, they started to remove people. Uh but also, we can ask Christine, how's how's how is it in your?
They they put up the governmental trespassing signs and the homeless um they actively dug dug one up and knocked it down. And so um Nate Eric and Harley contacted Lynn and they put up two signs where they knocked down the one. And then the homeless took it down again. And so they contacted Lynn and they put up another sign. And the police have been um arresting the people and they're the now that they they put up a sign up above on the road and down right in front of the tunnel where they stayed.
Yeah.
So the police have been arresting them, they've been taking them to jail like overnight. You know, and then they come out the next morning, so they know um they've even said it's like, wow, they're really serious now, so they're not all, there are still some going on down there, but but some of them are are setting up mattresses on the road level, so they're not under the tunnel.
Yeah.
But it's 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 better than getting arrested.
I think this we're we're arresting people uh.
Yeah, yeah.
Before we couldn't see so. As far as what we know, um they couldn't arrest any people because of homes.
Yeah.
There was no trespassing sign. So that's 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 a good step, um yeah.
Uh and up next, uh I'm going by order of um time, so I have Communications Committee, if you wanted to um report or add on to your work.
Yeah, yeah, so um we just had our first uh communication meeting today and just thinking of different ways to um implement more uh communication with uh those that live in the Kalih Valley community. Uh implementing uh new banners um and also connecting uh with 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 the banners, we wanna implement a QR code there that can connect the community members to what's what's known as Linktree, that has about six or seven different um social media platforms, where you can get all the updates and information of what's going on in our community. Um and and possibly work on uh Neighborhood, Kalih Valley and Calendar. So if anyone has something that they wanna put on the agenda for the upcoming two months, they can coordinate with with us or with me, uh and then we we can uh insert that in our calendar uh that everyone will have access to. Um I know it wasn't brought up in our meeting, but I was just thinking about uh different ways that we can help our community sign up for the, I believe it's called the Neighborhood Board Watch. Um I get their emails every morning if there's like a break-in, whatever street um
Yeah.
Or if there's um uh you know theft or a crime or even they they even uh send me like updates of like you have this um
Second report.
Like uh yeah, yeah, they 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 send me every morning, like this person just moved down the street from her house and they are this and this, so. It's really, really good to keep the community kind of updated and yeah, I I believe it's called Neighborhood Board.
It might just be neighborhood, I was gonna ask if it's neighborhood and it's like green, right, the color?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Neighborhood. It's like a Facebook, a green Facebook.
Yeah.
That's all.
Next door.
Next door, yeah.
Next door, that's all, yeah.
Yeah, I was thinking of that too, like should we have one that I hold up and just stay on Instagram and Facebook?
Yeah.
Since, yeah, it felt like it was actually like that anyways.
Right.
Yeah, it'd be nice for some private presence there. Um and now Sidewalk, Escur and Transportation Committee.
We did meet prior to this meeting, um I actually already sent a minute to Spencer. A lot of it was discussing Kapalama um avenue in the street. And you know, again, the there's a portion of it which is not completed between Alpuni and Hanayu. And we're thinking that completion of that segment of the road might help with vehicular throughput to commandment schools and relieve some of the pressure of the cars, all the cars that come down through Makuhine uh street side. Which is where Mr. Okausaki lives. Uh we're at our next meeting, we're planning on inviting some commandment schools to come in and and talk with us about you know, that idea and you know, I think overall kind of what commandment schools can do to mitigate all of the traffic that they send through our through neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Just talk a little bit about Ala and Kapalama.
We haven't discussed that um you know, as a separate item, but it will certainly come up. And I I think actually we should have, we need like a like a planning session, you know, to to throw all the different options for Hala and Kapalama. That was, that's a crazy intersection.
You're talking about the traffic there, yeah?
Yeah, the traffic and all the accidents like what like what Representative Mizuno was describing, you know, it is very dangerous.
My suggestion for that is for you to have a committee meeting that's separate, not half hour before the meeting.
Just ten.
And we invite um John Nochi and the guy from the state, I don't know who. Who's John Nochi is uh on our part in the street for uh traffic?
Take that word.
You know who I'm talking about.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh.
But I'm yeah, I'm getting.
But you.
Yeah, so and and asking them what the best way we could work with them.
Oh Kathy, can you help us with this?
No, 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 yeah, so um
Yeah, also.
Um issue, I'm sorry, uh.
This is the intersection of Hala and Kapalama.
Uh Hala and Kapalama.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But maybe you just reach out to them, see what's best way we could work with them to get things done.
Sorry.
You know, uh you're not making demands, you're saying what do we need to do? And how can we get things sped up a little bit or you know, what is the process of getting things done?
And also to get their their expert advice, you know, their their best thinking on it, because I'm certain that they've thought about this for years.
So you're talking about the intersection, what exactly uh is the issue?
There's, it's a, you know, it's really steep down, well, it's people speed down and the the traffic on Hala crossing Kapalama, um they Hala, there's stop signs, Kapalama, there's no stop signs or or any anything slowing down the traffic, and so uh it's just really dangerous. There is a resident here, Judy Suzu, they used to call me every couple of, every couple of weeks about some new accident that that was sort of a it's really.
But having them come, John Nochi then come and just say.
Yeah, that's a great idea, yeah.
Just asking visit that will that talks about sidewalks, that talks about uh crosswalks, that talks about bus stops, so.
Yeah.
We just got figured a date and a longer time and where to meet, ask better, if we could use one of these rooms.
Yeah, maybe if we did it at the same time with like at six o'clock in parallel with the other things that are happening prior to this meeting.
I'm sure we moved them to Clay. I mean, our meetings, cause we're kind of out.
Yeah. But our combined is over here.
Do a hard time to move back to Kai Five or whatever. Very funny.
You know, money.
Spencer, do you have an update about Kai Five, any chance?
Um for the, they're they're construction.
Okay, construction of the.
I don't know if it's done yet, I don't know.
What about the rec center?
Although.
I think the issue there is park one.
And and they're doing construction too over there. Is that because uh uh redoing the roof and all that stuff, so um rec center is out too. And that's not gonna be done to twenty twenty six.
I just.
So I did also want to Spencer.
Kalih and Luca school, I think we tried that one too, right?
I think we still need a response, I forgot it.
Well, you asked about Dole and you got Kri elementary too, yeah.
Oh, Dole.
Kri elementary.
I was focusing on elementary school eventually, but Dole is actually an option.
Yeah, look, I'm gonna try and see if I can find a response.
I'm a Kapalama.
Kapalama.
Kapalama is not in our area.
He's right across the street. He's not in our area neither.
Yeah. But technically Kapalama not in our area.
Across the street.
I mean, what about Kumiya School then?
Yeah, not in our area either.
It's not? Oh, no.
Other than ex commandment schools.
I don't.
We don't know our boundaries.
I know the boundary.
My boundary is ninety P M, or I want to.
Okay, we can move on then to the board business. Um approval of regular meeting minutes, Wednesday, August fourteen, twenty twenty four, can I get a motion?
So moved.
So moved by Mr. Hasi, uh any second?
Uh second.
Mr. Kumali, second, and are there any discussions? Seeing and hearing none, if there's no discussions, um then we can now vote, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed say nay. All those abstain. Do you have enough? Cause I think it's only us, one, two, three, four, five.
Definitely.
Are we able to?
We just need five, yeah.
Okay, okay. But I was like everyone online was, um it's all gone, but the motion has been carried. Um now up next is Chair's report, I didn't realize it was um September eleventh, so I do wanna ask if we can do a minute of silence um for nine eleven, if that's okay. Okay, thank you, everyone. And um I do wanna wish you, everyone, you know, may you all be happy, may you be healthy and may you all be at peace. And I also wanted to quote something that I heard um from uh meditating today, that it can be easy to think that we live in a harsh, cold world. There's actually a lot of beautiful energy out there and we can all be part of the positivity and the solution. But um I did wanna ask um or a what are not announcements, so the next meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October ninth, twenty twenty four at seven P M um at Kapalama Hale, um we could, it would it be at this room, Spencer?
Yeah, I you know, this turnout was pretty big tonight and I'm glad we were here, cause it's Titan one five two yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
In Ha, in Ha.
In Ha. I hope you guys all found it okay and
Oh, yeah.
Um yeah, I hope can all go out of the group, so nobody gets locked, there's some gays out there.
We don't lock down, or the the door was locked for a period, anyways.
Oh yeah, the security, yeah, if he's not watching, you'll lock it, but just wait by the door if that ever happens, cause it'll be open again.
You mentioned a bathroom.
And um broadcast meeting, neighborhood board meetings are aired on the level of Channel forty-nine on the fourth Saturday of the month at six P M and the first and third Sunday of the month at nine A M, are there any more announcements? If there are no announcements, I just have one announcement about Saturday, September fourteenth from eight thirty A M to eleven thirty A M, there is a Kapalama canal cleanup, so sign up. Um go to picktime.com forward slash S Q W, that's Papa India, Charlie Kilo, Tango India Mike Echo dot com forward slash Sierra Washington Quebec. And for questions, email Kyle um Doc Tokuda at Honolulu dot gov and that's Kilo Yankee Lima Echo dot Tango Oscar Kilo Uniform Delta Alpha at Honolulu dot Golf Oscar Victor. And if there are no more announcements, then the meeting is adjourned.